Adrian Johnson, Vice Chair.
John White, Volunteer, Board of Ed Member.
Beverly Washington.
Susan Austin, Superintendent.
Ray Engel, Business Manager, Interim.
Ian Thomas, Board of Ed Member.
Thank you.
So as you all know, this has been a hard year for the, another hard budget year for the Board of Education. Last year was hard. This year was harder. We lost our business manager. I'm not telling you anything you probably don't know, but we lost our business manager in December. So the superintendent and Ray and Denise and Lori and a couple of other people in the business office had to put the budget together. Is it a perfect budget? Budget? Probably not. Are there mistakes that were made? Probably so. But as the board went through the budget, we found some of the mistakes. We tried to do the best that we could with it, and we came up with a budget, as you said, of $94,361,564. This is the budget that we think we need, or not we think, we know we need, to educate our students. We want them to have a quality education, as you do. I'm not saying you don't. I know you all want them to have a quality education too. But this is the budget that we came up, that we think will support our school system and bring us throughout the year, the 25, 26 year. You're probably going to see some errors in the budget, but the bottom line is the bottom line to this budget. And that's all I have to say. I'll turn it over to Susan.
Well, I thank you very much for getting so many questions ahead of time. That was really helpful. We, basically, I was able to send you kind of a synopsis on the Groton Board of Education FY '26 budget, and I'll highlight a few of those areas. We also sent a spreadsheet, and I blew it up because I don't know about you in spreadsheets, but I need a bigger view. So we're going to go through. Those are actually all of the rows that I was asked to look into. We got a couple other additional questions that I'd be happy to entertain. Today was a really busy day. I was in schools, and I had a lot on my plate. But I did bring the team together at one point, middle of the day, to just kind of review this. So, you know, I just want you to know that we're happy to be here to tell you a little more about the budget. As Beverly said, I really feel this is an investment in our future here and in our students, and I know you feel the same way. That every dollar that goes to the Board of Ed budget really supports teaching and learning, our students, our teachers, and all those people who serve our kids. So the Groton Public Schools fiscal year budget FY '26 reflects strategic response to both fiscal constraints and imperative to address student learning needs, particularly in light of standardized assessment data that we've received. We kind of flatlined. We've lost some down during COVID, and we've kind of flatlined. So we really want to accelerate learning for our students so that we can get back to where we had been and go further. The state actually gives us target numbers for what their expectation is, and we're about 10 points from that target number, and the expectation is by 2030, we need to be there. So we've really outlined it, I've actually put it in my goals, to where we need to be and how we can strategically get there. But it is going to take some enhanced interventions and some support. We're already changing our reading program. We're looking at our math program. We've, you know, aligned ourselves to the science of reading. We're starting to see really good results. And that's really thanks to the board and for your support, because we were able to put programs and, you know, resources in to help support the kids. So that's an example of how we're really giving back to our kids and seeing some growth. But we still have a lot of work to do, to tell you the truth. So one of the key focus areas for the FY '26 is special education. There's increased funding to meet the raising, rising needs of special education services, both district-wide and out-of-district placement. You've probably read about it in the news. You've seen the governor talk about it. He actually put more money in the budget. And I think Groton is expected to receive about $200,000, John, I know you're aware of this too, at some point, to help support special education. So the governor's aware, we're all aware. Eastcon had additional, you know, payments or additional increases. Everybody has increased what those services are. A lot of our services are done right here in Groton, so I'm really proud of that. We also want academic recovery, a focus to increase support for students. We lost a lot of tutors. The board has put back five tutors into the budget, or interventionists, whatever we think we need more.
And that's in our elementary school level, because we want to try to firm up that elementary school. Because, you know, if the kids don't do well in elementary school, as they progress, they won't do that well. So we really want to focus on elementary school.
Additionally, we've just submitted a DOD ninth grant in the 10 years that I've been here, number nine, in mathematics. And it does have high-dose tutoring, really, for the upper grades. So with the amount that we're looking in the operating budget for elementary, and then should we get this high-dose tutoring and the mathematics support in this budget, in the DODEA, we'll be really happy. I'll be writing a little bit about it in board notes. I'll be talking to the board more about that. We have to wait and see. Should we get the grant? But everything that I've been told, with the Impact Aid Office, with the Department of Ed, and with all the groups that I have aligned with, with national organizations that support military-impacted organizations, move forward. There's no crystal ball. We're not looking at a deficit model and losing. They said continue to do it. So we've been encouraged to write this grant. We've been encouraged that, you know, the funds will come in. And so we're, you know, we're working off of that, and if we do need a Plan B, we'll have to look at it. But right now, you know, we're really moving forward. So, and then student mental health. And, you know, that has not really recovered since COVID. There's still more angst, I think. Social media doesn't help being on those, you know, devices so long. That doesn't help with the socialization. But our social workers do matter, and Northeast Academy and Charles Barnum does not have the shared social worker that they had in the past, and they really need it. So that's also an additional position in the budget. So, and then when you look at the comparative data in FY '25 versus FY '26, you know, we did increase the budget by $6 million to 7.28% increase. But if you look at the 100s, which are our salaries and wages, they're over $3 million increase. And that comes from contracts that we've negotiated, and we always invite a town councilor to serve on it. I have to thank Kesar Parker, because she has served on multiple negotiation teams. We have a minimum wage obligation, and each year it increases as it needs to, and so that's another factor. We have just a handful of these new positions that I had mentioned, the five tutors and the social worker and the special educator. And by law, we need the special educator because of our increased number of special education students. I want to say this out loud, because I know there was a question about it, but PCT is a planning and placement team meeting. That's where educators and parents come together and design a program that's needed for their student. Assessments are done, so we are able to pinpoint what kids need. And if a para is needed for a child, whether it's a one-to-one para or a part, you know, a shared para, that has to happen. And while finding paras has been really difficult because of the minimum wage piece and that factor, you know, we have had positions that have not been filled since COVID. What we do, though, is if you look at the section where it talks about other staff, there's a 131 line, Special Ed Teacher Aid, which really holds for para, temp positions, and subpositions. So you have to put a child with another adult who can help support them in their education journey, even if you haven't been able to hire the specific para for them. I would say my HR department has been incredible. They have gone to every possible fair and created them and have been at every community event to really, you know, encourage that. And the board has actually thought of a contingency area to see, maybe we do need to do a little more. So that's just out there, too. So just to say that we are really working on the problem. And there is a safeguard in that 131 line to make sure that we have people who can come in. And oftentimes, those part-time people, those temporaries, once they've taken the test to be a para, they can then join the para union. So it's another way to encourage people to come on board.
Point of information?
Your question?
Where are you noting 131 line? Because in our book, 131 is...
It's on the spreadsheet, Jill. Do you see the spreadsheet? So you had asked about, I had been told to look at particularly rows three, four, five, 11, 16, 17, 21, 25, 33, 36, and then more. And so what I've done is outlined all of them. You have what their, what their description is, and then any other details about the description. And then what was the FY '25 budget, what was the FY '26, and then what is the net change? So that you can kind of look across, and then some comments that I can explain it a little better, so that you can do a little deeper dive into what supports those areas for you. And I'll, I'll go through that carefully. I'm just right now giving you kind of the 100, 200 through the 700, big picture view.
Sir, I just wasn't following you because I was...
I know. Yeah, I'm sorry. So that's the 100s, which are, you know, the staffing, the staffing and wages. And that's really the row three, four, and five that you had asked specifically about. Two hundreds are the benefits, and that's up $1.3 million. And that's really to recoup and readjust our PEB obligation and any other healthcare costs that we might need. 300 are purchased services, and it's less than $100,000. And those are really related to special education and non-special education professional services. And I'll kind of go through a few of those when we go through the data bank a little more carefully. The 400s, which are property services, those are repair and maintenance, increased costs, and that's up about $141K. And some of those, you remember last year, we had all of those different, I guess, events. Each month, it seemed like we had a flood or we had something going on that we had to repair. And so some things got, because of the emergency situation, some things got pushed over to the next year's budget. So that's what happened there. And then you have 500, transportation, insurance, tuition. And then out of that $104,000 increase, most of that is tuition cost related to special education. They've all increased. Our magnet programs have increased. So our responsibility, and we have a lot of students who do go to New London, learn. They go to Ledger, Verac. Grosso doesn't cost us anything. The Marine Science School does. So, you know, our kids have a lot of choice in this community, and that's a good thing. But we pay for that. We pay for the magnet school for all kids, and then we pay additional money for special education. So that really is up as well. 600 supplies at $911,000. A lot of that, 675, is with increases in electricity. I don't know if you realized at home, but there were extra charges for recouping from COVID. There was a new contract, and I know that Ray worked really hard to negotiate to get a better fee structure for that. But utilities were up really high, and he continues to really dive into that to find out what's happening. And will this continue? Will this pattern continue? And then the 700s, equipment and instruction. We had the DOD supplement for years. I think it even got up to over $1 million at one point. About $500,000 per year was being spent on our technology devices and softwares. And that was great until it ran out. And we're not sure. The numbers last year didn't indicate that we were going to get DOD supplement this year. I have to say, the team has worked really diligently on having all those Impact Aid forms signed. We actually have more students this year than we had, or for next year, than we had last year. So we're hopeful that maybe that could be resurrected again. But for now, we know that we're probably not going to get that money. And so we really have to handle it ourselves. And someone had asked about how old are the devices? Well, they were really COVID, so pre-COVID, COVID, and maybe even just after COVID. So we have a one-to-one system where all of our middle schoolers get their own Chromebook. They're not real expensive devices. But with that being said, they don't always last as long either. But they do hold them. They have them one-to-one. They bring them home, and they bring them back to school, and they have them all the way through eighth grade. I think we collect them then and recycle. But then when they go to the high school, nine through 12, they have their own Chromebook. That's really beneficial and important for their learning and their homework and being able to continue their learning. So those have just really run their cycle like eight years' worth, or seven, eight years' worth. So that's something that's pretty important to us. We also had a plow truck that was damaged last year, and actually, we put that off in getting it right away. We held off, but that is in the budget for non-instructional equipment. So that's just a big overview of the different areas in an education budget, from the 100s to the 700s, that have really escalated and kind of the reasoning behind it.
I have a question. Where was the vehicle on this paper that you're saying, what line item?
Yep. If you turn the page, it's number 45, non-instructional equipment. And some of that is computer support services and maintenance. So if you look across at the FY '26, it's $162,968. There's everything from the chargers, monitors, backup servers, to truck and plow. Those trucks and plows are not inexpensive these days. You know, they can run up to $75,000 to $100,000. So, you know, we've kind of put that in as an investment. And I know that the town is working really hard. We did, we haven't had much snow. I didn't have to call but one snow day. But I know that John Burt certainly supports us with the team that will plow parts of Fitch, I believe, in Groton Middle. John, I think that's right. And then, and then our guys have to, with the new schools, we have a lot of walkways and even the parking spaces need to be cleaned out. And there's a lot of, lot of work to do on a snow day or even on an icy day. So would you like to go through the different line items that were recommended, that we take a look at? And I can kind of tell you in each area, from the budget book perspective, what that entails and where those expenses really lie. I can do that.
I'm not exactly sure how the council wants to do that. I don't know if they have some of their answers that you may have responded, or if they just want to ask the questions themselves. I'm not really sure. I think we should just go forward. If you, are you done with your presentation?
I'm done with basics, but there's a lot of information on the sheet, so we can refer back to this, you know, when you want or if you want.
So we can go forward with, I just think we can open up to questions if you'd like right now.
Yep.
You want to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Hey, Councilor Jones, you're first.
Point of information?
Yes.
May I please ask all the councilors if you're going to reference something to just let us know ahead of time where you're coming?
Yeah, please tell us the page you're on and notate what page you're on and things of that nature if you could.
Point of information, sorry, I apologize for interrupting, but how many speaking passes are we doing?
We typically do one. We can open it up to more if the council chooses to by a vote. Especially with Board of Ed, I think we have opened that up in the past. All right, Councilor Jones, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, Councilman McBride is not here tonight, or he will be here later, and he had sent out an email highlighting a lot of interesting points. And I'm going to read, summarize some of the points out of his email. We all have copies of that email. Town Manager Burt sent that out and gave it to everybody. So you can read the entire email. It's in your, in your emails. This is just sort of a summary of some of the things that he pointed out looking through the budget, and I just think they're important. First one is looking at the revenue tab on page 13. It's a total of $93,677,420, but total expenditures on page 12 are $94,361,560. So the budget is not balanced to the tune of $684,140. So his comment is that the budget needs to be reduced by that amount, should take care of that. He also talks about the grants making up a significant part of the Board of Ed budget, and the grant revenue is not increasing at the same rate that the Board of Ed overall budget is increasing. The increases must be borne by the taxpayers. The estimate for federal impact aid is overstated at $6 million and should be more appropriately estimated at $4.5 million, which has been the recent history. To make that adjustment, the actual budget increase to taxpayers supports funds of $12.1. And I'm just sort of running through a couple of these. There's a 20% increase or $1 million in other staff. This represents many new positions, or does it represent many new positions added to the budget? And he highlights certain areas, professional services, all the information technology supplies, equipment. So he highlights a lot of good points, and there's more into that email. I've watched your budget meetings. I've watched many of them. I've seen the frustration that everybody has sort of exhibited. I've had the exhibit of trying to lock down some of these numbers. That was my main question that I had asked and sent to you. So it just sort of gives me a little lack, overall lack of confidence in the numbers in light of our current economic situation that just sort of can't kind of lock things down. So in light of that, I would like to add a amended motion to the floor. And that will be $90,597,238. This represents a...
Second.
This represents a 3% increase in the budget. It's a number that will hold the budget steady. It covers all the contract, contractual increases and prior costs of living. So let's...
Could you repeat that number?
So the number is $90,597,238. And that's 3% over the 2025 budget.
Point of information?
Your question?
There is a $280,000 error. Does that come out? Was that subtracted out?
Councilor Jones, is that, that is 3% over last year's budget?
It's 3% over.
Over last year's budget, okay. Just wanted to confirm. Okay. Thank you.
Did you want me to respond at all to the revenue side? Because really, that's usually the job that you do. But I did get information from the Department of Education Impact Aid Office, Fatima Mohammed, last year when I was looking into some Impact Aid questions. And she said the best way, instead of trying to predict what's going to happen, is to really look at what you received the year before, and we received over $6 million last year. And she says if you use that as the number the following year, then you do the same thing each year. So that way, that you're certain that the Impact Aid money that's coming on behalf of military children is going directly as revenue into the budget. So that's what I was told that was probably the best way, rather than just, what we've done in the past is we've said, oh, it's been around $4 million. But last year, and there's been a couple instances that it came over, and there's some that just made it to $4 million. So, you know, that was the advice. So that's why we originally put it in. But it's really ultimately your decision on what you're going to put in as revenue.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Burt?
What they were talking about, though, is not that. Just when you look at page 13 to 14, the expenditures don't match the revenues. That's not, that's not bringing into that the Impact Aid. So if you look at the yellow section, page 13, and look above it at page 12, when you total the numbers on 13, they actually don't match your 94, 361. So it's about $680,000 less. So what you have off there is the town portion. They should have had about another $680,000 in it. Those numbers totaled about $93 million.
Yeah, so my book still has that $6 million. I didn't get the numbers with the four.
No, the $6 million's in mine, too. I'm saying regardless of that, totally ignore that.
Yeah.
Your numbers just didn't match.
So it was off by six, what?
Six eighty.
Six eighty.
About 680.
Six eighty.
We'd have to look into that. Thank you. But I think we have new numbers now anyway, right?
We don't use that number. Just if somebody looked at that page, then you would, you'd be off on it.
So I can, I have 40 seconds left. So I'm just sort of looking at the world out there and the environment that we're in. So I don't have a lot of confidence at the federal government level either in distributing this. Unfortunately, we're all in a really difficult situation. So I'm just trying to, so let's see what I see there in the line here. And I think just a little more reflective. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to start on page 12.
Page what?
12.
Under the yellow tab?
Under the yellow tab. Sorry, yes. Page 12, under the yellow tab.
So you understand how my brain works. When I look at a budget, I look at big changes. So equipment, $74,000, or $74,000 went up to $443,000 for a 498.9% increase.
That's what I just told you. We used to get DOD money for equipment, computers, and it really averaged about $400,000 to $500,000 each year. But this year, equipment comes in both instructional, which is the computers, the devices for kids, and then, and the non-instructional, which is all of the switches and the things that help run the computers and the truck and the plow. So that's what I had just explained, that that's why this had gone up. And honestly, Jill, I believe that $74,000 was probably because we were trying to reduce the budget, and we probably took it down too low, to tell you the truth.
Okay. I guess my, my concern here is you're losing a grant, and rather than trying to, like, reduce this, it doesn't feel like you're trying to reduce it. It feels like it's higher and higher.
So can I tell you that originally, the needs were pretty, pretty significant? And so what the board asked Clint, Dr. Clint Kennedy, to do was to go back and kind of highlight, what were the things that were most important? So we prioritized in kind of green light, yellow light, red light, like, we can do this over time. So that's what he was asking for, that he felt like he really needed for the kids specifically.
Okay, I'm going to move on to 2-3. I'm sorry, under the red tab, 2-3.
I even made that bigger.
So I'm going to start with line three, other staff. Your FY '24 budget was $4 million, $4.5 million. FY '25 budget was $5.1 million. Your estimate is $4.78, and this year, you're looking at $6.2.
Right.
So you didn't spend all the money from last year. So my first question is going to be, where's that money? Second question is going to be, you're asking now for $1.5 million more than you spent last year.
So our tutors are actually up $686,000, and our paras and aides are up $318,000. Most of it by contract, but in the tutors, because of our number of bilingual children and newcomers. We had to add EL tutors almost in every school. So just because of student need, this happens in special ed. It happens sometimes because of 504s, and it happens because of our EL students. So we had to increase the number because of need. So that's why those numbers, that's really the most significant part of that increase.
So I guess my question is, what happened to the extra almost million, well, half a million dollars from last year?
Say that again, Jill. I'm sorry.
So last year, your budget was $5.1, and you only spent $4.7, or you're estimating you're spending $4.7. Where's the rest of that money? And like, the next line down for substitute teachers, you budgeted $827 when you were at $1.3 the year before, and you've spent $1.4. So I guess where did that money come from? And now you're only budgeting $900,000 when you are looking to spend $1.4 this year.
Well, I do believe that we, even with our, our history, we were hopeful that, you know, with COVID, a lot of people were sick, and a lot of substitutes were required. And even this year, we were just talking about how it wasn't just COVID anymore. It's flu A and flu B and RSV, and there's been so many significant illnesses with both the staff and the students. So it's showing up in our numbers for absenteeism. And when you have a teacher absent, you need to put... And when you have a teacher absent, you need to put someone in there to teach the classroom. So I, I believe that 900,000 that we've predicted for substitutes may not be enough. But we're hopeful, like, everybody's going to get better here, you know, and that we won't have as much of an issue. And I think every year we thought that way, Jill, so we probably didn't put in the right amount of money exactly. But it hasn't, it didn't get better this year like we thought.
All right, I'm gonna jump down to the bottom. Instructional equipment on line 44. In FY '24, your budget was 24,000. Your FY '25 budget was 74,000. You only spent 24,900, so 25,000, but now you're asking for 280,000.
And that's the devices for kids. Those are really purely the Chromebooks for students in that budget for instructional materials.
Okay, then I'm jumping back-
In our operating budget in those past few years.
So then I'm just gonna jump back up to 21, computer network services. When you went from 174 to 99 and actually spent 179, and now you're asking for 264.
So those are our network services. I don't know if you remember, but we did have a problem with, you know, our network last year. We had to, you know, get the police there, and, you know, there was really, it was impacted. So we really had to upgrade and get some other safeguards in place. So people, bad actors couldn't get into our system.
So is that the same line item then, that 121 is on page 2-5? Yes. This is where it gets so confusing in this budget, because it's multiple times-
Yep, that's exactly it. Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for one more, 2-4, workers' compensation on page, I'm sorry, 2-4, line 97. Your FY '24 was 352,000. You budgeted for 429,000. You spent 450, and now you're asking for 615.
And it's up 185,000. And I think that's really, and it's also workman's comp and the town pension. So that's the experiences that we're having.
But your workman's comp alone is up 185,000.
It, it's workman comps and town pension.
Town pension is the next line at 85,000.
Oh, okay.
You're up total 271. So can you just walk me through that, please?
Well, I just think that that is the experiences that we're having in workman's comp. I don't know, Lori is here. Is there any other stuff? From the town? Yeah. So it's from our insurance company?
Point of information?
Yeah. Can you relay them information back on the microphone?
Yes, it's based on what we receive from the town and from the insurance company is what the expectation is for next year.
I've got time for one more, page 2.5, line 113, professional services. FY '24, you were at 500,000, 501. FY, I'm sorry, FY '24, you were at 500,000. You budgeted 297, you spent 500. And now you're asking for less again? And I'll end with that question.
So other professional services in 332? That's really mostly related to special education, and those costs can really vary based on the students that we serve and their needs. So those are all the services that, you know, through testing and that kind of thing that are needed. I'm just looking at my-
You were on page 2-5?
I know, but I'm just looking at my-
2-5, I'm sorry.
And that's line item one?
It was line item-
113?
Yes, special ed.
113.
Not 113.
Services.
113.
So that's based on that PPT, Planning and Placement Team, and the child's IEP, the plan, and what those services are required. And those are outside of our school district, so there are other professionals that we have to hire to do that work.
Thank you for your explanation.
Yeah, sometimes we might have to send a student over to learn, to get assessed, so that's gonna cost us extra.
Anybody else have any questions? Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to confirm, that $280,000 is not in your line item, which would have been 5-39, which would have been line 101.
What page are you on, I'm sorry?
5-39, which is in the back, pink section.
And what, what line are you looking at?
101.
Oh. There, that, that was a negative, so that was just a, what would you call it, a?
That was there before me, so I don't know what it was, but it's not a valid number.
It's not a valid number, so it's really a-
Could you speak into the microphone?
It's not a valid number. It's a zero, really, because it had been a negative.
Is it potential to be negative, or should both of them?
It's really a zero.
For both of them, for 25 and the, because that was a concern, that we were short.
Right. Because we really haven't had certified staff in that section, in that 101. If you look at, our certified staff is in 101 and 151, so it's really mostly in that 151 section that we have. And then special ed is in 102, media specialist, 103, so you can see all the certified teachers in that area. But 101 was an anomaly, and it was not a number. It was just zero, because that account wasn't used.
Most of that budget, this budget was moved to 5-7.
So from 5-39, the 101 is to where?
Page 5-7.
5-7.
The 101 line, if you're looking there, it should be on page 5-7. That's where all your certified teachers are.
Right. So if you look at 5-7, that's where you're gonna find the certified teachers.
So that's an increase of 775,000 and change?
Right, based on contract.
And you estimate that will be over budget on that?
Over budget?
Well, for fiscal '25, and then your estimate, you're saying you're gonna be over budget?
It's increased by 775,000 from '25 to '26.
I'm looking at your estimate. Do you anticipate that? Because that means your numbers are gonna be off for '26.
I think we've encumbered all of them. Are we expecting it to be?
Some are gonna be over, some are gonna be under.
Right.
It should be, it's gonna be close. It's gonna be close for this year.
I know that Ray and the team have done a great job encumbering everything, so we have a lot more understanding of it.
Okay, so going back to 5-39. I know you probably explained this in one of the emails, but line number, account number 325 for the student intern, is that an actual student intern? And you, for the last couple of years, well, this year in the '24, you did not budget for that. So what is the 12,240?
What page are you on, I'm sorry?
5-39, still on 5-39, line number, account number 325.
Those are summer interns to help out with the IT department, to get everything working over the summertime?
So what were you doing previous with them?
I don't know that we had summer interns this year, this past year, but they were required. Dr. Kennedy asked for them for next year.
So we haven't had them in the two years?
Probably not, no. All right. My, I do have time, okay. My other question was, oh, can you please explain what this contingency plan will be used for? I think Beverly can, because I know it was something that the board really wanted to do. It's for things, several items, for things that like happened the year before, where there could be a boiler blow or something happened out of the ordinary that you're not, you know, it's a contingency. And then we do have, we're getting ready to negotiate with the maintenance, custodial, IT and secretary. They're all in one union. So union issues and union things are also a contingency, because we don't know what that's gonna cost us. Yeah, and paras, yep.
And you separated the, I believe it's the human services portion?
Human resource-
Resource portion. Where was that originally, and why did you separate it out?
It was always put together, the superintendent's office, which included the assistant superintendent and all of our admin assistants along with HR, all of our professional development, our dues and fees. And it really was cumbersome. We thought it would be more transparent, actually, if we separated those offices, so you could see more likely what our expenses were, what our salary structures were. So instead of lumping it all together, so it was like a guessing game, we really wanted to separate it so it would be a little more clear. My kids keep calling it's my birthday, sorry. So, so I don't know if that helps, but we really were looking for some transparency in this budget. So things, a couple of things did shift, and we just thought that would be easier to understand.
Okay, how many positions are available? Education side, there's teachers and everywhere, but how many are open at the central office? And how many have been filled? So do you have open positions at the central office as well as across the board?
I know of one that is posted currently. We are ready to make an announcement very soon. The board will hear first about a business manager, so I'm very excited about that. That's one big position, and I hope this person will be with us for a long, long time. I think that really has been a hardship, having four different people. And fortunately, Ray came back to us. He came to do a town review to help us with that. But he stayed because we needed him, you know, to be an interim business manager. So I, I just feel like, you know, it, it has been a hardship. I think there's one other position posted for the business office. We've had a couple retirements in the business office, and actually even in the main office, we're having a retirement. So there are some, even though central office has been pretty steady for a long time, there are some recent changes.
Okay. One more question about central office. Did you have new positions created within the last couple of years for central office?
No.
And these, some of them have been there since '23?
Yeah, yeah. There's some temporary help that we get. We have one registrar in the main office, and I've told you this story probably too many times, but we have 800 kids come to us and about 700 leave in one given year. And that means the flow of personnel and getting all records for kids and then, you know, withdrawing kids is quite cumbersome. In different times of year, it's even more challenging. So sometimes we'll have temporary help help out in the main office to answer phone calls and to help the registrar. But that's just dependent on the sheer number. Summer's really busy. There's different times of year that are really, and even October, the subs are coming in a lot of times, not in the summer, but in October. So we just monitor that very carefully.
The second half of my question was, how many across the schools you trying to fill positions?
Across the schools.
And which ones are still open as of last year? Let me rephrase that, as of 2024.
So I would say that the, the largest number is our paraeducators. And we do have that temporary line, so we often will get the subpara, and then that para, that person may want to stay and take the assessment and then become part of the union. So it's a nice way of entry to get people interested in the job. But we do have to fill those slots. We do have to have that IEP covered, that, you know, individualized education plan covered. And if it says that a child needs the paraeducator, we need to put someone with that child.
I, wait, how many?
Um, the exact number?
Yes, across the board.
It varies, because a lot of people will come in and out even within various time. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. You said, she said between 25 and 40, depending on the time of year.
And that's just the paras? I said across the board, not just paras? So how many overall?
So I think most of our teacher, teachers have been filled. We're now starting to look for next year. We have retirements, so we also will be filling those positions.
I think we got a custodian.
Okay. No. Chairman Washington, could you ask the question for me? How many people?
How many open positions, right, do we have?
I don't have an exact number. I have to get that to you. Yeah, I have to get that to you, because I don't have that. I just know that the largest majority is the paraeducator. There aren't very many teachers that are not filled positions, and other positions aren't.
Do you have that lower?
14.
14.
So there's a potential of basically 50 some odd people that you're trying to hire? And can you please explain the difference from your budget last year? You asked for 19.5 for the tutors, but you're now at 30.5, and then you're gonna go up to 35.5?
That was the need for EL teachers in each of the schools additional, based on experience. We also had to put in an SEL tutor in a couple places where the need was, and an ELA teacher, an ELA tutor in a couple situations, so by need.
So that line-
And then the board added.
The board added to this to for elementary school.
Five, that's where the five came from.
Which will put you over in that budget line?
For next year, the extra five.
No, but you're gonna be over budget this year, because you didn't put, did you put 30 in for 20?
We put 19 in.
19 in, but you're up.
Right. And we're up, yep.
So that line, that'll will be over?
Um, I'm not sure if that's over or not. It depends on the, some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time. So it depends on the amount of money that was put in.
How many are part-time?
I don't have that number.
Can you have that forwarded?
Sure.
And may part-time tutors?
Part-time tutors and full-time.
And full-time.
And will we be over?
No.
No.
You're running 100, actually, you're running 120, $100,000 surplus in the 101 line right now. So you are running, it's close, but $100,000 surplus in the 101 line.
I have one time.
I'm gonna take a turn, because I don't see any other hands right now. So I think the board did a fantastic job this year. I watched all your deliberation meetings. I think you dug into the budget. I think you asked a lot of good questions. I know that there were challenges for the board this year. There were, there were, I don't know what it's called, system errors, formula errors. There were errors in numbers, and it was very challenging for them. And there was some frustration from them, and I could hear that in their meetings. And I feel for them, because it's not easy to do a budget with the numbers not solid. So I give them a lot of credit for what they went through, and I thank them. I have a question that, in a recent meeting, there was an issue with encumbered and unencumbered. It went from 15 million or 13 million down to 1.5 million. I mean, and there was some kind of issue. Can you touch on that?
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
There are some systemic issues with e-finance that does not allow us to do certain object codes or encumber them properly within the system. So they have to manually be processed, either through the purchase order process, for example, healthcare that we share with the town. We have to manually input the encumbrance on that, several other lines. Any, any hourly employee line that's in there has to manually be done. It can't be done. Or at least my staff doesn't know of a way to do it. So we have to manually encumber those type of salaries as well. So that's why you saw the big fluctuation. When I first saw the budget, it was what, mid, mid-March, somewhere around there? And I was asked a question, are we encumbered? I was, I was told yes, because last fall, when I left, instructions were given to make sure everything is encumbered. Those changed. Not everything was encumbered, I found, I found out. So we've gone through the process- I found, I found out. So we've gone through the process. We're re-encumbering things. We've tightened our controls and we're back where we should be now. Is the balance 12 million or 15 million? No, it's not. It's hovering about $1 million right now. That's where we're at, which is fairly, you're in fairly good condition right now. But we have watched our spend. We've slowed our spend down. Very little is being, passing through without heavy scrutiny, so.
It is a big fluctuation, though.
Yes, it is. When I looked at it and I said, what in the world happened? But not quite like that.
Okay.
I was just as surprised as everybody else.
I do think, though, just to add, that's one of the reasons we want to move to munis. I think it's really going to help resolve a lot of these issues. What I'm learning, even through interviewing new business directors, is not many people have to see finance, and it has been cumbersome. And anytime you have people who have to do input instead of the machine, you have, stand for human error. And of course, we did have a business manager who was only here for three months and, but wasn't really here all those three months. She was out a lot. So, you know, in that time, you know, things did happen, and the board was frustrated. I was frustrated. I pulled the whole team together. So I have to commend the team, the central office team, for pulling together to take something that was really not, I couldn't pass on to the board. And so we really came in with a 6.5% increase, and we did our due diligence trying to make it work. So I just want to commend the team, too.
When it comes to computers and the truck and plow, my question is, why are these not being requested as a CIP? These are large dollars and they're not reoccurring. Is that correct?
We, we actually checked with John, and he said to go in and put it in the operation budget, at least the, the student devices, he thought, should be in the operating budget.
Good. It's never been done out of our CIPs in the past. When they've done vehicles, we checked back. It's always been done out of their budget.
So, but like 642,000 for computers, is that going to be reoccurring on a annual basis?
Well, no, it's not 642,000 just for the computers. I think the computer number is more like 300,000. Then there's other equipment that's needed, like coupled for methion boards, and then there's the plow truck, and I think that's about 100,000 instructional. So there's a few things in that, in those items.
So the one that you're, the DOD grant that you're no longer getting, those, that equipment for the children, that's like the 300, not the 600? Okay, yeah. All right. But are they going to be reoccurring?
Most likely.
What?
Most likely, because they start rotating them in.
Oh, yeah. But I'm hopeful, getting the numbers we just got, that maybe there will be a chance that we can resurrect that DOD supplement. You know, it's all based on numbers, and it's based on numbers of active-duty military, military-connected. So it's really quite a process that we go through to collect all of that data.
Okay, I also heard in one of your meetings, I'm just going to ask, and it might be uncomfortable, but Mr. Engel was brought in to help with finances, and can you tell me about his salary?
I actually don't have that information. When Ray was first here, he was basically a consultant and also had, when we brought him back to help do the, we were just keeping track of the time with the town review, and then we have him on board now as salary. So we, I can send that information to you.
Because my question is, what I've heard is that he makes approximately $20,000 a month as a part-time employee of the Board of Ed.
Well, he hasn't been part-time in the past three months.
I've been working 80 hours a week, if not more. I mean, maybe two weeks.
Has your salary changed?
It has not changed.
So are, were you, are you making $20,000 a month as a part-time employee in the past?
If I work those, I'm an hourly employee. I'm not on salary.
Is your salary approximately $160 an hour?
I think, I think, Rachel, the best thing to do is to get you the numbers.
I really want an answer to this one, though. Is your hourly rate about approximately $160?
It is $160 an hour. I won't take any less because that's the going rate for interim supers, up business managers or directors of finance. There are those that are making 200 plus, and I came in to help out, and I was asked to come in to do that. And I drive three hours a day back and forth, total trip.
We don't pay for that.
I don't pay, I don't put in for mileage.
Well, you are probably the highest-paid person in the town of Groton. You make probably more than the superintendent and the, and the town manager. So going back-to-back, I do have an issue with back-to-back budgets that are over 7% increases, and it was really, came across that we really needed this money last year. And when I hear that we're paying somebody $166 an hour, and how much people were crying out that they needed tutors, and I honestly think to myself, was this the best way to spend the taxpayer dollars when we probably needed tutors? And that's what I heard from your, your board.
We haven't had someone in place, really. We've had multiple people in place, but we need to have somebody in place as a regular business director, and Ray has been the one who's come back and helped us get through a lot of challenges, and the board recognizes that. So I, you know, I can't tell you what the salary is because I don't have that information. I could find it for you and give it to you.
I think he just told me about that.
He gave you an estimate.
He said his rate is $160 an hour. And I'm, I'm not, I don't mean to pick on you at all, but do you have a CPA or an MBA? Are you a highly educated, like, financial person?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Point of order, I just think this is, in my opinion, I feel very uncomfortable, and I think it's crossing major boundaries. It feels a little, a little bit much, and I, I mean.
What, what, what part?
All of it, honestly.
That hourly rate? It's taxpayers, it's, it's public knowledge.
So why didn't we go through the rest of the town's budget line by line like this?
When I find out.
We have not.
I do not think it's a point of order. Thank you.
I think it is a point of order. I think asking him if he has his degree, I, I just feel like this is crossing a line. But if no one wants to accept my point of order, I'm on the record status.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say that I think a 7% back-to-back is really hard for our community to sustain this type of environment. An increased, and I also think it was really hard that, I mean, you came up with your budget, and then the board even increased it from there. I think in this, how volatile things are right now, I would support the 3% increase. And I think we really, as a town, including the Board of Ed, all of us have to really take our wants versus needs, and I think it's going to be challenging in the year ahead.
So if you bring it down to 3%, we will not be able to pay contracts. We'll be putting 30 in a classroom. It's going to break the co, the contract, and it will break, the fire department won't be able to put that many kids in a classroom. We just don't have the room. So you're talking about major cuts to staff if you take it down to 3%. I'm just saying. It's going to be almost impossible to run this whole district, and it won't be the same district that you know and love.
Counselor Borderline?
Thank you. First, I just want to say I attended probably 95% of your meetings, and I know sometimes it's kind of tough as, you know, as it always is even for me here. But I will commend you guys for your due diligence, and even when the conversations got tough, you guys still pushed through and respected each other's opinion. And that's to be commended in the, you know, the situations that we currently, the states that we're in. So I thank you guys for that. It's okay to oppose each other. It's okay to bring your differences to that table. That is why the community has elected you, especially to the new Board of Ed members. Thank you for, you know, your inquisitive, you know, thoughts. With that, it keeps saying, we keep talking about, in my opinion, I speak for myself, that we are in charged, uncharted times with the federal government and all the cuts. With that, one of the biggest things that were coming out of the federal government is the lack of importance to education overwhelmingly. They are not willing to support. They're cutting everything everywhere, and it's very obvious. As a town councillor, I am, I am tasked with looking at the budget as a whole. This year, we passed the town side of the budget. The council just passed it all as one number. I am feeling uncomfortable that we are taking, in my opinion, we are taking so much scrutiny on the Board of Ed. I think it needs to be reviewed, but we did this with no other department thus far. It was passed town manager's budget at a whole. No council had a chance to pick apart.
Counselor Borderline, we're on topic number 1080, the rest of the budget. The rest of the budget is not on the table right now.
So with that, we have an 8% increase going to the police department, which I am all for, the police getting a raise, as I have family members who are.
Counselor Borderline, the police budget is not on the table right now.
It is very critical. It's my, it's my discussion.
You're out of order.
Other departments have increases when looking at it. We're talking about the whole taxpayer dollar as a whole, so I have a right to talk about the full number of what I feel I want to cut or not cut. So those numbers are pretty to the topic at hand, the full budget and the bill rate. With that, they are going up almost 8%, and that was passed by this council. I'm all for these budgets increases. As I said, I have a seal of record.
Counselor Borderline, we're not talking about the police budget right now. We are on topic number 1080. You are out of order for the second time.
With that being said, I cannot sit here and go line by line on this and nitpick apart the professionals that are around the table that are here to educate our children. I am concerned that this is our focus and our only focus. This is the longest we sat around the table discussing the budget as a whole this whole budget season. And yet, Board of Ed is before us, and this is where, unfortunately, we do have the numbers of other people to agree, but this is where the focus has become. And I am concerned. Our children will be affected in this town. Looking at those DOD funds, the one-to-one initiative, the kids go to college, that whole thing, they need their, their tablets and their things. We are in a, a system where we need this. I cannot support larger classrooms. I have to, even though I would never, I mean, I would send the email behind the scenes. I'm not going to sit here and ask you what your degree is, nor do I want you to ask me with minus. It doesn't matter. And what you make per hour, that's not our privy. Can we ask what the town manager makes? That's not our thing. That's something that should be.
Yes, we do.
It is important, but it's not today. When we're talking about the entire budget, there's pieces to that. In my opinion, I'll take my other turn after. I support the budget as written. I expect that you guys did your professional work, and I stand with you and the teachers and the students, and I hope that the parents get the proper raise that they deserve. I will not stand to, to sit here with the federal government cutting our children.
Madam Mayor, point of order?
And the town.
Your point of order.
Counselor Borderline's time was done 30 seconds ago.
You are right. Again, out of order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of information?
Your inquiry.
My inquiry, are we not under operational review right now? And we're just trying to make sure everything's okay?
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Counselor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sent my questions ahead of time. So a question I have through the mayor to Director Engel. Do you know what the Board of Ed budget is on track for surplus or deficit for FY '25 this year?
FY '25 is, right now, somewhere between 400 to 700,000.
Surplus or?
Possible surplus, barring no unforeseen issues or anything like that. So, for example, if you were to get three more special ed children in, they could cost me $200,000. I mean, that's, that's the name of the game. We're in education.
Question for the superintendent. I, I have concern on, my big concern is on the tutor line. I did not get an answer to my question on what is the cost for one entry-level tutor. In my email that I sent to you, I got it for paraprofessionals and I got it for teacher aides, but I was wondering what the cost was for that.
That came in really late, and I was already doing something else. I had meetings. Did we ever figure out the tutor cost? Say that again?
40,000.
40,000.
Okay, because I was going to guess 40,000, so I'm quite proud of myself right now.
Oh, good. I didn't know if that was shock or awe.
No, that, that's what I had right on. Can you explain the difference? Is there a difference in tutors from what was funded in the ARPA funding and then what is needed? What is the need now? Because my concern is, is you had 11, you budgeted for 19.5 tutors, and then magically 11 tutors came in, you came in 11 tutors over budget. And I'm also concerned about the finances because you're tracking $100,000 under, that was previously stated. So I'm just, I want to, one, get a better idea what the tutor position is, and then, two, are all those 30-position tutors filled?
So that 40,000 is if you have a full-time tutor. We have some tutors that are part-time, even in EL. So you have some that are working part-time and might make half of that, and you have some that are 40,000. So to give you a real accurate number, I'd have to really look at what we have. But EL tutors, we really have to hire them based on need. And we are considered a bilingual district. That means that Mystic River has the large enough amount, the middle school and the high school to be considered bilingual schools. And we're very proud of that because a lot of those students come in already bilingual and can get a seal of biliteracy and then have to learn, you know, another language. But they do need support in learning the English language. So.
How is it different than the COVID tutors from the ARPSR money?
So there were 124 positions in the ARPSR, and most of those were tutors. So we had ample, in every school, we had about three or four ELA tutors, three or four math tutors. We had three or four EL tutors, and we had SEL tutors. So we've really reduced that number to maybe two or three total tutors in every building, except for EL. We have a few extra EL tutors that need to service kids depending, especially in that Mystic River School, Groton Middle School, and Fitch High School, because of the large numbers, and they're considered bilingual and by law, I have to provide them.
How many tutors are, how many tutors are EL tutors?
I would say the majority of the 19 that we had originally, or the majority, and then we've had to add a couple more.
Thirty and a half. I want the thirty and a half from this year's number. How many of them are EL tutors?
I can't. I'd have to look at that to see exactly how many are EL versus other.
Director Lapine, I see you in the audience. Is that answer you can get me relatively quickly?
Yeah.
I want, I, I have other concerns in this year's budget as well. I'm going to direct you to page 5-7. Oh, you're waiting on me. Sorry.
Tell us where you want us to look.
So on line 6-1, it says general classroom supplies. You budgeted for FY '25, $73,848, and you're estimated to only spend $31,198. And with that, logically, I think that you should have a decrease in reduction in that line item because you're not spending the $73,848, but you're asking for $169,934. And you can find this in multiple lines across the budget, and I have concerns about it that, you know, I'm not seeing a reduction. I mean, you can just go up to 5-8, line 5-88 on the same page, travel for field trips. You budgeted $50,202. You've only spent $7,517. My question is, I have a concern that we're budgeting for things and we're not spending, we're not spending the amount of money that was budgeted for that in that general topic.
The past three years, we have not been able to use our entire site budgets at every school because of the nature of the budget. So they've held back on certain things. And when you hold back on certain things that you need for classrooms, you need it for the next year. So they have been very careful with their spending. But if you look at the actual supply count, instructional supplies, 601, general classroom, we had budgeted $159 for a 25, for 26, it's up $50,000, and its increased needs were deferred from prior years. So, I mean, it's only $50,000 for, you know, for all of those schools, so.
Point of information, are you on six, oh, sorry, point of information question. Are you on six, we were on page 5.7. 601 is the general classroom supplies, which goes down and back up? Is that what you were referring to?
Yes, I'm on line 601, and.
On the spreadsheet, Jill.
Again, may I ask that?
No, I was talking, I was in the budget book. I was not on the spreadsheet.
Sorry, it's just really hard to follow when we're bouncing around, so.
So the 73,000 doesn't seem to be a total number for general classroom supplies.
It's not. That's for function 1101.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Because you're looking at individual functions.
Yeah, that's just for the elementary schools then. So I'm looking at the entire classroom supplies for all functions. So that's elementary, middle school, and high school. That's what I have on line 36, instructional supplies on the spreadsheet, and that's a total of 159, 26,000, or 26, 159,000. a total of $159,026, or 26, $159,026 for FY '25. And it goes up to $209,877 for '26, which is an increase of $50,861. And then the explanation in the comments, because we spent a lot of time going through this to answer these questions that were asked, that is an increased need due to deferred from prior year budget. This year, if we haven't spent it all, it's because people have been asked to slow down, and we've been really prioritizing, and they'll, you know, will check in with me to get things authorized just as an extra precaution. So I know we will need that money next year.
Director Lapine, do you have an answer for me?
I do. 12.5 EL tutors.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to put another number on the floor.
Your number?
I'd like to put $92,4,575, which is a 4.6...
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
$92,400, sorry, $4,575. So it's 92004575.
Oh, my gosh. 920045, 920045.
75.
Thank you. That sounds like $920,475.
$92 million. $92,4,575. Two zeros. And that is the number, oh, I don't have a second, so I can't talk right now.
You don't have a second. Moving on.
Madam Mayor, point of information.
Your question.
Can you speak to his number?
Uh-uh.
There was no second.
I'll second for, I'll second, so I can hear his reasoning. Counselor Gieske.
My reasoning is, I went through the budget, and I looked at where I wanted to see some cuts. I can't obviously tell the board where to make those cuts, but that's the number of the amount of cuts that I thought were reasonable and didn't affect, didn't have as great of impact. So that's how I came up with that number.
You had at one point said what percentage that was?
It was, it's 4.6%.
Madam Mayor, can I say something?
Okay.
I just want to say, we cannot survive on a 3% budget. I know that some of you think $94 million is a lot, but to take us down to $90,000, $90 million, we will not be able to survive. I implore you all to rethink that number and come up some, because we will not be able to survive with that. And I don't want to say we've got to cut this, cut that. You know we're going to have to cut. It'd be up to us where we cut. But we cannot survive with a 3%. As you look in your book, throughout the years, we got 0.2%, 1.24%. So it's only, so the percent of increases throughout the year, the highest was 2.97%, and that was in 2023, 2024. Last year, we got 7.9. That was high. If you don't give us 7.9% this year, but don't, don't do down to 3%. We will not, please, I'm begging you. Please do not take that down to 3%. We will not be able to survive with a 3% budget. I'm just asking you. Don't do it, please.
Point of information?
Your question.
So, this, the chair just mentioned that there was a 0% increase. How much would it have been an increase if you added the ARPA funds in? Because you received additional monies through ARPA. How much would the increase have been?
Oh, I don't have that number.
When, when are you talking about, Jill, that the ARPA funds were added in?
All right, let me find. We keep hearing a 0% increase for so many years. So in 2020, I'm sorry, page 10, under the yellow section. So in FY '19 to '20, we got a 1.42...
Point of order.
Your question.
I think this is expanding on point of information.
Then I will, it's been, okay, yes. I'm on, yes, I'm on page 10.
For the years '21 and '22 were 0% increases, but you also received ARPS or money.
Well, thank God we had the ARPA money, because we took a 0% increase those two years. I don't know why you're looking like that. We took a 0%. So if we didn't have ARPA money, we wouldn't have been able to do a lot of things. So thank God for the ARPA money.
And that was definitely for COVID relief and all that we went through for safety and security in our buildings. There was a lot of work done to make sure everybody was safe and that we were still teaching and learning and getting them what they needed. And that was really the rollout of the one-to-ones, too. We, you know, improved that. So we got some resources to help us survive during that time.
Listen, I'm not focused on the past. I'm focusing on the here and now, what we need now. I don't care, I just brought that up. Maybe I shouldn't have brought it up.
Chairman Washington, you brought the cast up.
The here and now. We cannot function on a 3% increase.
No way.
No way, Jose. So that's what I'm focused on. And I'm asking you, please, boost it up, boost that up. Help us out.
Thank you. So for the first round, Counselor Mayor and Counselor Pacino, you haven't spoken. Would you like to speak on any of this?
I'm good.
And we know our budget isn't a perfect budget. We made mistakes on the way. We know all that. We get that. We understand that. We know you think the numbers aren't right. We get that. But the bottom line is, the bottom line is still $94 million that we need. Now, we may not get that, but I'm telling you, we can't survive on 3%. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but we can't survive on that.
All right, so we have, your question.
Do we take a second round?
Counselor Bordaline is asking for a second round. And would the council like to do a second round? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention. All right, we'll go forward then.
I won't support anything other than what was asked. As a person who's dealt with the special ed department in our community, as a proud mother of two boys that serve our country and are serving our military, as a council member who constantly, we speak about, I'll speak for myself, economic growth in our town, how we bring people into our community. We talk about EB being our driver, and how proud we are as we went to that Ohio christening, and new submariners and families are being welcomed to this community. These children and families come from all around our country to the town of Groton, and their income levels are all over the area from all of the moving that they do. And we provide a stable benchmark place for them to gather and grow. And so we can't, on one hand, say we're the submarine capital of the world, welcome everybody in here, and on the other say we want to build and develop and grow, but yet then look and see to cut our, our children where they're most needed. We're coming off of COVID. You know who is most affected by that? Minorities and folks that were underserved and people with lower incomes, by far. Why? Because they could not pay for private tutors. It wasn't fair or equal or equitable education. The kids who got the support are the parents who had the time and the money. Frontline workers, at the time I was working in the medical field, my husband was working as a teacher in corrections, we were not home. My son was sitting home by himself, looking at a screen. We were not supervising, and there was nobody there to help him. He was 15 years old. Those treatment gaps, we were able to help grow, close, because A, we have an educator in our family, and B, we paid for tutors. We have an obligation to this town to educate our children. And we cannot, on one hand, give 8% increase in other line items and other areas, and then we have other areas say, let's develop and grow and bring more students in, but let's, on the other hand, let's cut it, both proud and strong.
Counselor Bordaline, you are speaking for others and their motivations.
I'm speaking for myself.
You're doing motivations of others. You're saying we are doing what we are doing.
I'm speaking for myself, based on the number.
Can I say then, "we"?
I'm speaking on the number that's on the floor.
Then please stop saying "we".
Well, then I will speak for myself. I feel what I'm seeing, what is perceived to be, based on the number that's on the floor. We cannot say, on one hand, and then do on another. Education is our building block. It is the one thing that everyone has fair and equal access to, and should be afforded for everyone. This cut would drastically hurt that, and I cannot support anything less. Do I agree that there's probably problems? I can think there's problems, you know, on other line items. As a counselor, we did not even go through the other sections of the budget. We're only going through the Board of Ed. That's a concern. What's going on in our federal government is trickling down our town, and to me, I cannot support anything other than what the people who are charged with doing is bringing forth an education for our children, a stable foundation for our teachers, our families. You know, I was asked the other day, some people said, why do people want to be teachers? Look at the cost that they start at. They're, they're breaking their backs and to think that they're going to have to cut and increase their class sizes, that's only going to jeopardize and make that chiefment graph even get larger. I support the funding that they're asking for, and if we have questions, let's move towards growing that in the next years. But I stand with the asked amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to speak a little bit on my number. You know, I go through my town budget book, I go through my, I go through the Board of Ed budget book, line by line, on my own time, takes hours and hours. I know the number that I put on the floor is the number I'm comfortable with. I am not comfortable with the 3% number. I think it's too low, just based on my stuff going through the, doing, taking hours and hours upon the budget. And I think my number, I think my number is doable and reasonable. And I just want to say that, you know, I know we're in tough times, we're in tough world times, we're in tough, we were in tough inflation times before then, but I do want to put on the record that last year's increase was the largest investment ever in this town. Even the number that was put on by the council last year was still the largest number increase this town ever made in education. And then the number I'm putting on the floor is the second largest, is, well, third largest, because the Board of Ed's asking for the second largest. But I appreciate the work that our teachers do, and I really want to circle back. You know, we talked about the site budgets earlier. And I know why you hold them, because, you know, the budget's fluctuating. But to me, that's something I wouldn't hold. I'm just speaking for myself, and that's something I wouldn't hold, because that hurts our students in the long run. That hurts them in the supplies. And I think my fear is, and I know most teachers do, they're spending out of their own pocket. And I don't want our teachers spending out of their own pocket. So I implore you, when it comes to site budgets, what you budget, that's what should be given to the schools, and I wouldn't, I, I ask that you don't hold it. I obviously don't have a say in it, but I ask the board for kind of accountability in that, just for that.
Can I just, just clarify, it's not a frozen budget. It's just a prioritize. So they're coming to me. Field trips are going through, papers going through, the absolute essentials are absolutely going through. So we're just looking at everything very carefully. That's all.
Yep. But, and, you know, I said, I said I get why you do it. But, I mean, I just, that's just coming from a personal opinion. You know, I don't think it's any secret. I think there's broad public opinion that teachers are underpaid, paraprofessionals are underpaid, people who work in our school are underpaid. And so I just, that's, I'm comfortable with my number. That's all I'm going to say with that. And, Madam Mayor, your number.
Counselor John, did you hear every man down?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent Austin, and I know you guys do an amazing job. I get to meet a lot of your students. In fact, I'll get to meet a whole field trip tomorrow, leading another group through, through our conservation lands and open space. So it's really good. I understand that, I believe, last week, you probably received a certificate from the Department of Education on, unfortunately, the DEI compliance stuff. And I want to just make sure that, that you are complying with that, that memo is due next week on Monday, and that we're complying with all our policies and practices, that we protect whatever federal money we can get, that that is going to be filed, and we're going to get it there in time. So I just want to verify that that's going to happen.
All superintendents are meeting with the Commissioner of Ed tomorrow morning. We have an hour long, and she's going to be guiding us through that whole process.
Through the process, okay.
So we are absolutely on top of that.
All right, that's great. So I just want to make sure that that's, because that's important to get, whatever it is that we're going to, we're going to get, we can do that. So, because I know we do have some incidences, and you found some more last night, that, so we can kind of clean those things up. So, great, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rose?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you to all of you. To Chair Wyman Washington, the only reason why I brought up the 0% was because you brought it up. And I do think it's not quite right, because there was so much ARPA funding. So it wasn't really a 0% increase, but it was a 0% increase that was asked for by the Board of Ed. So the town supported your 0% request. So it feels like it gets thrown in our face a lot when it was what was requested by the Board of Ed. So there were two years that the Board of Ed requested 0%, and it keeps getting brought up like it was something the town council did. So, that being said, that was the only reason why I brought it up. So I'm going to go to something else. Chair Washington and I, you and I spoke, and you said it was our, something along these lines. Please forgive me if I'm not quite saying what you said. You said something along the lines of, it's our obligation to come up with a budget for our children, to fund our schools. And it's the town council's obligation to set the tax rate and do what's right for all the taxpayers. So yours was to do what was right for all the children, mine was to do what was right for the taxpayers, or ours. Is that accurate? Okay.
But don't forget, the taxpayers have children.
I get that. I get that. No, 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 I get that. And so, your budget is about 65, the Board of Ed budget is about 65% of the budget. And we do have an obligation to our town to educate our children, but also to look at our taxpayers. And I have said this on multiple occasions, we have a 40% rate of people who live in the ALIS population are poverty. That is a huge percentage. And for those of you who don't know what ALIS is, it's asset limited, income constrained employees. So it's those people who are working but are having a very hard time meeting their month-to-month obligations. So, as a counselor, I look at our tax rate, and I say, how do we, how do we balance this? How do we balance making sure we're doing everything that we need as a town, and yet, we're not overtaxing our population? And so last year, we said yes to about a 7% increase. It got bumped up a little bit more. That was huge. That was a huge amount, and it bumped up all of our taxes.
You said no, but the RTM said yes.
That's not true. We said...
We were like 4.6 or something like that?
Yeah.
4.6?
Oh, 6.
Oh, 6. I'm sorry, we were 6.
I'm sorry. So we said yes to 6. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to misspeak. We said yes to about 6, which is a huge increase already. The RTM brought it back up. Okay. So this year, you're coming in with a 7-plus percent increase. It started at 6-point-something, it got bumped up to 7. So I, I'm trying to weigh that out, and how do we make this work for everybody? And so I am asking you, as a Board of Ed, to give some thought to, one, where can things be cut back? Because taxpayers can't keep doing this. And I get that there was a 0% increase, but again, that was what was asked for. So how do we come to a common ground here? And maybe it's not 3%, but maybe it's not 7. I'm out of time.
You're asking a question.
I don't know that there's...
Do you have an answer? Do you have an answer?
Let me think. Now, when we took that 0%, right, as I understand, it was because we had money in the health insurance fund. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, John, but this is as I understand it. Cindy said you could take the money out of your health insurance fund, you have a lot of money in that fund, and use it, that hand you drew in.
Well, that was a question for the speaker.
Oh, okay. All right. And use it for your schools. So that's what we did. Why would we want to have a lot of money in this fund that we didn't need, and we could save the taxpayers' money back then? For, so, for two years, we actually saved... For, so, for two years, we actually saved the taxpayers' money. Now we are asking for the taxpayers to pay a little bit more, more than that 3%. We cannot function on 3%. That's all I'm saying. We need more than 3%. There's no way we can run a school district with a 3% increase.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you've hired people knowing you didn't have technically the budget for it. Technically, in certain areas. Technically, in certain areas. You could do whatever you want with your budget, but when we see the budget, we're proving it for one thing, and it's going to change by the end of this year. So you've increased it already, technically. So we're also going to be adding to what was there, and then you're going to add some more. So can you do between a 3.5% to a 4% increase?
No. You're going to still have 25 to 30 kids in a classroom. You're going to really, and it could, it could be at the cost of losing some really highly qualified teachers, because they can go in other towns where there's going to be 20 to 24 children like everybody else has.
What new init, what new initiatives are you going to pay for? And I noticed there's some increases on certain areas where you're saying you have to do special testing and stuff. What new initiatives have you implemented or get ready to implement with next year's budget?
Any new initiatives we've initiated are through DOD grants. That's how we get professional learning. We don't charge a lot for professional learning, because a lot of our professional learning comes from those DOD grants. We have about four of them running right now.
There, there's a line item where there's an increase for the teachers in something in it. I can't remember what page.
You have to show me what you're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Please, please show me what you're talking about.
Hold on, I have to go through my page. Da-da-da. It was interesting line, sorry.
Is it in the budget book?
It is. It's in the budget book, but I had written it out so I could have it right in front of me. I, I marked this up a lot.
I know.
There's a reason for everything.
It's a mess right now.
And, for instance, I technically, the 280,000 is where I, it really set me off because of the clerical errors, if that's what you're saying. It was something about the student pupils, and then the next line was teacher, not fees, but sending the teachers out for something. And granted, I know they have to go out and recertify, but it was a big gigantic jump where the fees for them going back to school are getting additional certifications, extra...
We do have a tuition line.
For the teachers.
For teachers. Because by contract, we are able to pay for part of their college, all teachers have to go back and get their master's degree, so we do help support them in that. The, it only goes as far as what we put into the budget, though, so it's basically, they have to turn in their cert, their paperwork.
All right. I'm sorry, for one second. I can hear somebody talking in the galley, because I'm, can just superintendent speak?
I don't know, is there anybody who knew what line who you were talking about? Is it, I, can you point?
I, I can't find it right now. I will email you later.
Okay.
So my question will be for you is, if you don't get that 6 million you anticipate from DOD, and it only comes in at 4.5, we just gave you 1.5 million. So where are we going to balance that out at?
Well, that, that's really up to the town to decide on the revenue. I'm just recommending what I heard from the Department of Education, Fatima Mohammed, who is in charge of Impact Aid for the nation. So she had said, "What you should do is you should be looking at what has come in the year before, putting that as the number, and each year, when you do that, you're really more accurate than just guessing or predicting."
But that's not, that's not a confirmed number. So that's not email, that wasn't an email, that was just a phone call, correct? So we can't...
That was, that was a discussion.
That was a discussion, so it could change by the time we do find out.
We don't know what could happen in Washington right now.
It could happen, we don't know what's happening with our nation. So can you do a 4%? And, 4% is a little less than half that 7.28 number. That's my question.
It's not going to be the district that we have now. And it will be a tremendous stress in a very stressful time that continues.
You do have, do have open positions. Can that be held off in hiring until later on?
Well, those open positions are teachers in classrooms, so I keep going back to our classroom size, which has been recommended by the board, and what is in the contract is 20 to 24 kids per classroom. And with the ebb and flow of military children, that can change over time, so we're always monitoring that very carefully.
I, I'm sorry, did you say, it's the paras you're talking about, or the teachers? I asked if there's teachers that invite, so 15 teachers need to be hired, if I remember correctly, 14 teachers, and then you said between 25 to 40 paras that you have open positions for. I just asked that in a very beginning.
Right, but we need those people to be with children. And if you don't, if you take them out of the picture, then what you're doing is putting in other teachers' class. Let's say there's a four-tier school where there's 20 to 24 kids in the classroom, you take one of those teachers away, all of a sudden, the teacher has 30 to 35 kids. I don't think that's fair. Our teachers won't stay for that. So I'm just saying, this is the reality check. I've done this for 45 years as an educator, I'm very proud of it. So, you know, I really understand education and what it takes, and even during this very tenuous time, I understand how difficult it has been on staff and students and families. So we're just, and I, I really applaud this board, because they were looking at this investment and saying, "We do need those tutors. We do need that social worker. We do need that special educator." And actually, if I need another special educator, another para, I don't have to come and ask permission. By law, I have to get that person. We might have to give something else up, but by law, if that's required, I need to do that.
I know, I got one minute, I can ask a question.
No, I think it's...
Nope. Put the beep on. Put the beep on. Can you get me numbers of what your test scores were the last three years, please?
Thank you. Time has not expired. And that's part of the reason, Counselor Parker, is that we really had been very successful up to 2019. We had gotten two blue ribbons in five years. And then we, COVID hit, and like everybody, we kind of took a little bit of a nosedive, and we have, you know, been making little bit of increases in some places, but not in every place. So it is a concern for us. We're actually going to have on our agenda on the 21st, a review of the report card and all the information from last year.
Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of things. One, just in terms of the Impact Aid. One of the earlier budget meetings, I watched for Board of Ed, it was mentioned that you had mentioned, Susan, that it should be trending, a one-time-year thing. Good financial policy calls for actual trending. You never look at just one year, so just noting that. In terms of the 0%, those couple of years, if you recall, those are when the new schools were coming online. We were promised cost savings at the time, which then transitioned to the term, I think it was, cost avoidance, or cost increase avoidance. So just mentioning that, there were some other things going on then. And then watching the Board of Ed budget meetings, it's hard, I know there's legacy issues, ever-changing numbers make it really difficult for you to understand that. And that's what's hard for us. We don't have a good feel for what's really going on there, because I don't think you do either. You don't always get the answers to your questions, I see frustration. One thing I would recommend is, end of each meeting, summarize, have the chair summarize, what are the questions that didn't get answered, and make sure they're on the agenda to be answered the next time, so that you can start developing that transparency and getting answers. I do agree with Counselor Boardland about the economic impact of schools. I think the test scores sort of stymie that a bit, the help that gives right now. Federal funding in terms of the unknown of cutting, one thing I'd recommend is that you undertake sooner rather than later, a comprehensive class size report study to see, I know you're not, your contracts allow for larger than you're doing class sizes, just look at that and analyze it. I would just do some preparedness in case the worst happens with federal funding. But having said all that, I think 3% is hard, and I agree with Counselor Gajewski's number, but that's my thoughts. I kind of see the same thing, Sam, when I look at it.
Your question? I'm just curious, I mean, I appreciate the town manager's thoughts, but like, aren't we the ones determining the budget?
Yeah. We decide the budget.
Yeah, I'm just confused, like, I mean, there was a lot of opinion from the town manager, I thought we...
Thank you.
Could I just say, the charter actually allows for that. I'm a full, I have full access to speak on everything.
You're right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to take a turn. The thing is, when I'm hearing on the news all the time that every person should expect about, potentially $4,000 extra per year, that means all of our residents in our community are probably going to deal with prices of increases. It's going to hurt our community. The budget is about 60, 65% of our budget, somewhere in that range, and honestly, 7.9 last year. You have that increase. And it, I had people calling me and begging me not to give that increase. They were begging me on how hard it was for them to survive. I mean, these are the things I have. So that's a reality check to me, too. I mean, we went to the RTM afterwards, and honestly, it was flooded with teachers and school professionals there, and I don't blame them. I don't blame them for showing up. But there are residents here that could reach out to us and beg us not to increase taxes because they are hurting already. They are hurting. So these are the things that we deal with. I understand for the children. I absolutely do. When I say the 3%, I'm good, because the town does that 3%. So for the Board of Ed and the town to be at 3%, our overall budget would be 3%. Then I look across the river at New London. From what I'm seeing, they're going to get 0% increases. And you want to talk about like devastation of a school system, I can see it over New London, that's devastation. I think if there was a cut to, like, no, I'm not going to say it that way. This is an increase to your budget last, from last year. This is not a cut. This is an increase to your budget. And it may not be everything that you want, and I understand that you're upset because you want more, you want to do as much as you can for the school and the kids, and I am all for that. Trust me, I am, because I've always been very supportive of the schools. Paras, I'm the one who asked for the $400,000 increase. I'm the one who did that. So I get it, but these are some tough times right now, and people are panicking. The stock market is crashing on a daily basis, and I know it could rebound very quickly. I understand these things. But I'm going to say, it just seemed fair in my head if the town tightened its belt, and they can talk about other departments getting a certain amount of money, because we passed a contract. We, I understand contractual obligations. So other departments might get a little bit more, but there are contractual obligations, and I understand that for you, too. And listening to your discussions, most of the contractual obligations were about 3%. And then I'm thinking cost of living as well is in there. So I was trying to think, 3% would be a fair, fair, because that's what the town did. I will support the number that's on the floor at the 4.6, but I'm telling you, there are two sides to this coin. Educating our children, because we all want smart people in our community, just do, and we have good, good kids that know things. But on the other hand, you have residents here who struggle. They just do. Thank you.
We understand that. We understand that.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino and Merritt, do you want to add anything?
I'm in favor of the number presented by the school, school board, unfortunately.
Okay.
Because I'm, I was of the opinion of 15 per class, but that's long gone.
That's long gone.
And I'm just going to have to go by what advice I don't have.
And don't forget, students are much different now than they were two, three, four years ago.
I just hope to see that in our community in the future, because a lot of times, I don't see that in the general discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino, anything to add?
I really don't. I listened to everything, everything, everybody said, and I am on board with, with Counselor Gajewski's 4.6.
Thank you. All right, we're all through with that round. Two rounds down. Okay. Seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 92, $92,4,575. It is a roll call vote. I'm going to start. Counselor Merritt, number on the floor.
No.
Counselor Pacino, and, Counselor Boardland?
Just want to be clear, this is whose number? My.
92 million?
Is, is not the number that was requested.
92, it's the amended motion for 92 million...
I support it.
4,000. You are a no. Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Russ?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride is not here. Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am a yes. That is, what?
What's the number?
That's 6 to 2 to 0. That number passes. Can we take a recess? We sure can. Let's take a recess.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Wish you the best at the RTM. What's the birthday present I wanted? It is, I can't see the time. Is it 7?
7:54.
7:53, we're going to take recess. 7:53, we're gonna take recess.
Okay, we're back from respas. I believe it is eight seventeen-ish. And we are on to CIPs. This begins on page two thirteen of our packet. I don't have a bunch of book. Are we moving them each one individually? So we're on page two fifteen, Councilor Gajewski.
Two fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong section. Motion approved for project, for project town pavement management program of 1.3 million dollars for FY26.
Second. But Gajewski, seconded by Mayor.
And Mayor?
Yes.
You can do it, you're good.
Okay. Go ahead, who's your idea first?
Okay.
Did you move the number? Go ahead, Councilor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I had had conversations with the town manager ahead of time about this. And I would like to change the revenue sourcing for this. So I would like to make an amended motion to use 1 million dollars from this and capital, from Capital Reserve Fund, and then 100,000 dollars in LoSiP dollars.
Second? I'm sorry, 1 million from reserve and I'm sorry what?
Capital Reserve Fund and then 100,000 dollars from LoSiP.
Just to be clear, Capital Reserve Fund balance, or Capital Projects Fund balance?
So, 1 million from the reserve fund, the CIP reserve fund balance and 100,000 from LoSiP. And that is moved by Gajewski and it was seconded by Mayor and the amended motion is? Mayor? I'm sorry, Gajewski, seconded by Parker.
And then, I'm gonna keep going with my turn here. If you look in our budget book on page forty-nine, you'll see that the Capital Reserve Fund, the fund balance percentage is 57.7. And after speaking with the manager and confirming the information, that money came in from the Enterprise Zone money, which can only be used for CIPs. So, I think that it would be responsible, we got that money from the state of Connecticut. I think it would be responsible to put money towards that. And Manager Burr threw you to the town manager, uh, threw you, wow, to the town manager, through the mayor, to the town manager. If we use that 1.1 in Capital Reserve, do we have an estimate of how much is left from the Enterprise Zone after that?
Do you remember how much we have allocated to use up before this change out of Capital Project Reserve? Now, we have about 4.4 million in that fund balance, 3.9 of that is Enterprise Zone. And it's not like we specifically, it doesn't say Enterprise Zone, not why we use it.
Yeah.
Was it a little under 2 million prior to this for, out of the fund balance for Capital Projects?
I think that, that 4 million already accounted for those pieces.
No, in terms of how much am I using on the, I'm not using it all for the revenue funding on this, it's, I'm not using 4 million on this budget. I'm using like 2 billion-ish.
So how?
So the pay plan, do you know what it totals on the pay plan to come out of Capital Project Fund balance?
I can take a look.
Point of information?
Yes, your question.
Which line are you looking at? Is that, is this the Capital Reserve 501? On that page forty-nine?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then which line is the Enterprise Zones?
It's in that, actually this is point number 501. It is in that, it's in, it's, it's, it goes into that fund from the Enterprise Zone. So, I believe, I, I can't remember the number off the top of my head that was received for the state of that. I know we've used a couple of that additional funding. But, so, it's, it's in there, but there's also money like from our general fund that's also in that fund as well.
Okay.
Hence why I asked my question to the town manager. And then, I'm gonna, I think this is critical. You know, in reviewing the town budget as a whole, there's nowhere you can really cut, it's tight. And I wanna save 1.1 million dollars for residents. And so I support in using this fund, this additional fund money. And I thank the town manager for talking through this with me ahead of time. And for his research and accomplishing this. Thank you.
I get 1.631, is it, what did you get, Dee?
I had 1.8.
Is that before, with that other 200,000 we're looking at coming along or without that?
I was taking the approximate 4.4 million as of the end of March for the fund balance. And then I had, if we utilize all of the CIP fund balance as you were initially thinking, 2.6 million-ish from fund balance, leaving 1.8.
Okay, with this 1 million to be using 2.6, right? Okay. And again, 1 million out of this, 100,000 LoSiP grant?
Councilor Gajewski, are you done?
Yeah, you're looking back.
Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just drew the mayor to the time, I'm just confused at what exactly, a little bit confused. So, we're talking on this, the motion is on the floor, it's 1 million from Capital Reserves.
Instead of general fund, right?
Instead of general fund, and then 100,000 from LoSiP.
Instead of general fund.
Instead of general fund, so that's 1.1. And that would replace?
1.1 in general fund.
The 1.3, which was the original?
No, you're not changing the original 200,000 LoSiP. So altogether, it'll be 1 million out of Capital Project Reserve, 300,000 out of LoSiP. You're adding another 100,000 to LoSiP.
So the?
So it remains 1.3.
Six.
Okay, so the construction part, this is the, the construction part?
I would just look at page two seventeen. We don't do it by the construction part, we look at the main number.
You mean two fifteen?
Oh, sorry, two, yes, two seventeen on the PDF, two fifteen, fourteen.
If you look at page two fourteen and you go up to 1A and B, and it has the section where it says other, where it can be funded.
Yep.
You're gonna change the LoSiP money like to 300,000. And you're gonna basically change and add in 1 million from reserve. In the other column, where it says other, so it's a source of funding.
So that becomes 300,000?
Yes.
And the other, the Capital Reserve Fund is, drops 100,000? Because it's 1.1 there? Am I right?
Say it again. So, when you look at this, under Capital Reserve Fund, it'll still, it'll say zero, well, it'll say zero. And when you go to the right, it'll say 300, 300 LoSiP, 1,000 CIP fund balance. So nothing will come, when you see that first general reserve fund, that's meaning our general fund.
Okay.
Do you see if you go down like to five I?
So we're basically taking 100 off of the 1.1 and we're adding the 100 out of LoSiP one to the, LoSiP. That's, so we still go with the same amount of money?
It's all the same amount, right.
It's all the same amount of money?
You're just taking 1.1 million in general.
Okay, all right, so this becomes a hun, this becomes 1 million.
And the reason we could do that extra 100,000, when we budget this, we hadn't received our amount for LoSiP yet. We just were confident it'd be over 200,000.
Okay.
And it came in just tiny bit over 300,000.
Okay. That's, okay, all right, that's great. I mean, I just, I just confused how you were sort of constructing it. So we're not losing anything, you're just changing its funding source.
Right, just saying, just bring up money in the general fund.
Okay. And for, Greg, thank you, Director, how have you been here? Handover. I know we always talk about our PCI numbers, there's always a discussion on road repair. And these look pretty low, so I think these roads probably really need it.
Yeah, this year, I mean, in the previous years, we've been concentrating a lot on neighborhoods, going into whole neighborhoods and doing the roads because there, you know, there's a few that are in really bad shape. But this year, we're really concentrating on collector roads, which are larger volume roads for town. They're our main roads that connect to state arterial roads. We like to keep those a little bit higher just because they are used more often. So that you see some that are in the 40s and 30s, which if that was in a neighborhood, we might be putting it off a year or two. But we want to do these collector roads and, you know, a couple of them are fairly long, like North Pleasant Valley Road. This road parallels Route 12 up by the subbase. And then we have a couple smaller roads that connect off that, which is the east end of Crystal Lake Road. And then Ohio Avenue, which is a really low PCI 12. So it's all in that same area. And then the other collector roads we're looking at is Lamb Town Road off 184 and Shoeville Road off 184. They both go to, towards Ledger Town Line. And then Godfrey Road, which is in the Old Mystic section. And that has a PCI of 13, which is really low.
Which is really low.
I'm pretty familiar with Lamb Town Road, it's pretty, it's, it's lots of bumps and it needs a lot of work, so.
So, all those roads together total up to the, to the 1.3 billion.
Okay, okay. No problem, it's just, it's a number that we obviously discuss every budget season is the, of PCI.
Yeah, that's about the number we need to keep our PCI average around 70 for the whole town.
Okay.
And we've been able to do that, it might have dropped one or two points over the years, but we're, you know, able to keep it up there at that level.
All right, great, great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So are we just voting on the revenue source that was put on the floor?
I think, usually you just vote on the expenditures, I would just direct, do you need anything particular, or do you need them to? It's just, I'm telling you to make that revenue change enough?
They can, they told me that they wanted the revenue changed, so that's fine.
So I just don't know what we're voting on, are we voting on the 1.3 with the revenue change?
1.3.
Just 1.3.
1.3, okay. All right then, Councilor Mayor. How do you vote?
Yes.
Councilor Borderline? Councilor Pacina?
Yes.
Councilor Rusk? Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Gajewski?
Yes.
Councilor Parker?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight, two zero, two zero. Onto the next item. B1, page two sixteen, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Capital Improvement Project, B, excuse me, B1, Bridge Repair. I moved the number 100,000 dollars. So moved?
B1 is moved by Jones, seconded by Rusk. Mr. Yanover, anything you want to share?
This is for the construction repairs to the Thomas Road Box Culvert. Last year, we, you funded the design and permitting costs, which, so the design has been completed. We've got all our DEEP and Army Corps of Engineer permits. So now we're ready to go into the construction phase of this culvert, which was identified by DOT a number of years ago that it needed to be worked on. So we're doing some concrete repairs to the box culvert itself, replacing the guardrails along the road and then doing some stabilization of the wing walls for scour.
Councilor Borderline?
Um, to the mayor, to the town manager, how much LoSiP funds do we have left?
None.
So that cleared it.
Yeah, we only get 300,000.
So I just wanna make sure there's no leftover. I just think this, you know, needs to be done, it's a loadout that, you know, it's been waiting for a while. The plan was to repair it, so definitely can support it, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands, we're gonna take a vote. Councilor Mayor, how do you vote on this one?
Yes.
Aye. Councilor Pacina?
Aye.
Rusk?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gajewski?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
And also a yes. Goes eight to zero to zero. Up next, Culvert Rehabilitation Drainage and Shed Water Protection, A2. Council Rusk?
Sorry, um, Project A2, I moved the amount of 319,000 dollars.
Second? Moved by Russ, seconded by Borderline.
Okay, this is the Quaker Farm Road Bridge, which has been out for a number of years. The funding we're looking for is additional funds we need based on the most current cost estimates. There was some money approved back in FY23 of 741,000. That was half of the cost estimate at that time. Because this bridge is being funded under the state local bridge program, which the state pays 50%, and the town pays the other 50%. But, you know, that was almost three years ago now, so we had another estimate redone and it's just over 2 million dollars now, 2,120,000. So the town's share has gone up to 1,600,000. So if we take what we have already funded, subtract it from the 1,600,000, we have 319,000 of additional funds we need. The project is just about ready to go out to bid. We've got all the permits that we need and we're just, you know, once we know we're gonna get this funding, if, you know, if it gets approved through the council, then the RTN will, will put it right out to bid.
All right, not seeing any hands. Councilor Mayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council Borderline? Council Pacina?
Aye.
Council Rusk? Council Jones?
Aye.
Council Gajewski?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Yes.
And also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, Replacement of Sidewalk Construction, this is A3. Council Pacina? This is on page two eighteen.
Let me go back where it was, it should be. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Capital Improvement Program, Project Detail, Project Replacement, Sidewalk Construction. Let them move 100, 100,000 dollars.
Senator?
Moved by Pacina, seconded by Gajewski?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not recommending any changes in terms of funding or funding sources, however, I'd sent an email to the council earlier on suggestions that we fund some of these, but not expend anything until at least just after summer 31st end of the year to make sure that federal funding for education doesn't bottom out. This is one of those I recommend after discussing with Mr. Hanover to fund it. But then he's got some money left over in a CIP to do this summer, so it can wait till next summer.
Your suggestion?
So just hold it to the end of the year. Fund it just as you would normally, but direct me to hold it, not expend to the end of the year.
Do we need amended motion on that at the moment or in a general overall conversation?
Yeah, just a, just a, your regular motion's fine. And then let me know if you do in fact want me to hold it.
Okay. Council Borderline?
So, I mean, it's not a large amount, would it make sense to then like fund this later? Like instead of like passing and holding it? I mean, we have a, healthy enough, I mean, it's not robust, but it's healthy enough that we could fund this and it wouldn't need to, you know, just sit and wait under?
We would miss the spring season of '26, so this, you know, we have enough money to do this summer, but we wouldn't have money then until going into July next year. So we would want, you know, this helps us get going early in '26, so, so it is still needed.
I guess what I was trying to say is we, we have other fund, so what's the fund revenue that you'd be using for this?
This one is?
So I understand.
General fund.
So if you're using it in the general fund, could you just do that later?
Again, I recommend not putting it off that long. I recommend funding it, but it's up to the council.
Wouldn't be putting it off, I, I was, you're saying let's fund it but hold it, so if?
Six months.
Yeah, so we could, we could come back to the table and like, like, why hold it for six months versus just vote on it later?
You can't vote on it later because it's gonna be in the general fund, tax collection. And the only reason we would not spend, expend it is if federal funds just made everything, so we were cutting all kinds of things. Yeah. And so it's just a contingency planning, but, so. And you also don't wanna cut your general fund CIP amount so much that the next year, you know, you're at zero and next year you gotta go back up to 3 to 4 billion, so.
I'm not seeing any hands. We'll take a vote on 100,000. If you have any, if you would like him to hold the money until September, until?
End of the year.
End of the year. You don't have to say anything, if you oppose that, you should also speak up at that time. Council Mayor?
Yes, on 100,000.
Okay. Council Borderline?
Yeah.
Council Pacina?
Aye.
Council Rusk? Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gajewski?
Yes, and hold it.
Council Parker?
Yes to, yes and hold.
All right, that passes eight to zero to zero with affirmative for a hold on that, thank you. Up next? Thank you. Up next is A4.
Recreation?
A4. We're going to go, thank you for coming.
Oh, I'm still here.
Facilities improvements, parks and recreation. Come on down. Good evening, Mr. Berry. All right, we have, um, Council Merritt, do you want to take that number? It's on page 219.
Yes, uh, I believe requested for FY26, our funds $220,000 for facility improvements in parks and recreation.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Merritt, seconded by Jones. Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
This was another one I was going to recommend, holding 220 to late in the year. I do have one question for Mr. Berry, though, on the condition of the Snake Hill Stairwell, you know, what level of condition that is, whether that needs to be sooner rather than later?
If we could do that sooner, that would be much appreciated. I just got a call two days ago about the condition of it. You know, we've been piecemealing it over the years, and, um, since most of this, most of these projects are outside, by deferring it six months, we're really putting it off a year, because we wouldn't be able to start a lot of these projects in January, so.
So I would recommend, yeah, funding that, not holding that, and the rest holding till the other $175,000, I believe, to the end of the year.
Yeah, I just went up and down that staircase, actually, probably about three or four weeks ago. I walk down that area a lot, and did dinner at the Fisherman, well, walked first and then went to dinner at the Fisherman, and we did that staircase through Noank and with friends and stuff, and it's pretty bad. And it was funny, because I said to my husband, I said, I should probably take picture of this and ask, and then I referenced this first and saw it was already on there, so that's why I didn't send anything forward. But I thought it was kind of dangerous, and I consider myself pretty capable of using stairs and things, but there were definitely some things where I could see, could be some liabilities coming down the pike, such as someone get caught on some of the things that are there, so I definitely support that. I also don't think I support holding any of them, frankly. So my vote tonight will be to move all of them forward, as I feel, I don't, I don't think they should, any of them should wait personally to six months. I think they should get going, so, that's me. But I, I thank you, Mr. Berry, for bringing those forward, and I definitely was interested when I saw those stairs. It was definitely, I was like, wow, that's definitely a needed CIP, so thank you for that.
All right. I do have a point of information myself. The $25,000 for the steel coating and line stripping on three pickleball courts. Mr. Burt, you're saying that you think that that should wait till next year?
Well, six months, well.
That would be the spring of next year. It would probably get lined and striped on a new pickleball court.
I sent these, and I didn't get an objection on it, but, Mark, do you see?
Yeah, no, I'm, um, these are not the, the new court, this is not for the new courts. This is for the existing court that's out behind the community center.
Okay. Thank you. Council Rusk?
Um, I, my question kind of went along those lines. Is there anything else in here that you need to do this year that would make these places unusable without the money now?
You know, the, the Parazotti Boat Launch is, it's in pretty rough shape. I, I think the fishermen are used to it this, at this point. But I was also, when the town manager asked me the question, I was also trying to be sensitive to, you know, the situation we're in, and, like, yeah, I'll take one for the team and, and put this off. But I, I do agree with Councilordalyn that the stairs should be addressed as soon as possible. I'm sure the fishermen, if they're listening, aren't going to be very happy with me that if I say we can put it off. But i- if we were to prioritize the four projects, I would say the stairs and the boat launch would be kind of one and two.
Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, thank you, Mr. Berry, for being here, through you, through the mayor, through, to you. My question, technically, this is not, this is funding that's going to start July 1st. So you're just delaying some of the stuff till later to do the project for. But you will be doing the $45,000 after July 1st. All of this is for July 1st anyways. It all depends on when you go out to do your bidding for, to get everything done, correct?
Yes. When I, when I put the CIP together, the plan was to do all these projects starting July, starting July 1.
Okay.
You know, it was then, the, the town manager said, well, you know, asked a number of departments, can we defer some of the spending? And I replied back that, yes, we could defer these projects. When I'm speaking with the council now, if there is an option to do a couple of those projects, then my recommendation would be the stairs and the boat launch, if that's the council's wish.
Mayor, sorry.
Mr. Burt?
Oh, I'm sorry. So my question is, so you wouldn't have gotten these done on July 1st anyways, unless you're going out to bid in May or June, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the budget process, I wouldn't have known until the end of May whether we would have this money as we went through the RTM. So, yeah, in all likelihood, we're going to have to put a bid proposal, an RFP, together. We'll probably work with the Engineering Division. They're the ones that put together this estimate. By the time we go through all of that, it would likely be the end of the summer before the stairs were under construction. And I don't think we would want to start the stair construction, you know, July 15th, because that would be kind of the peak, peak of the season.
All right.
For use.
Hey, Brian, all through dark, Mr. Berry's presentation. I messed up, so go, and then I'm going to count like 10 seconds.
It's okay. So basically, everything will be starting wait after July 1st, and some of the construction won't start until maybe September, if you can do it, if everything falls just right. So you're only waiting three months. So only one of the projects you want to wait on, which you probably were going to be able to do until the spring of '26 anyways, which is the seal coating for the three pickleball courts and basketball located behind Groton, by, behind 355, correct? So the other two can be done a little bit earlier, if the deterioration is.
Yes, we could start those if that's the council's wish. And then the fourth project is the reconstructing the basketball court at Bel Air. Now, that's something that, you know, if we waited until December, if the council decides we're going to hold that money until the end of December, then we wouldn't be able to do that project until a year from now, once the paving plant opened up again.
Through you to Mr. Burt. Mr. Burt, um, so it looks like there's three projects he would like to get done, and just to hold on the $25,000. Are you okay with those?
Let me give an explanation. I know it's weird, those holding numbers. If we did lose millions in the federal funding, I'd rather cut CIPs than cut positions. And that's the, everything we save here is a potential position saved. So that's why, you know, so you got to weigh that, that, that's why I'd much rather do this as emergency planning, have that money for the worst. And if, if, if nothing bad happens, then we just move forward. It's just a little delay.
Right. One more question. Again, through you, um, to the, so if we saved $150,000, or go ahead and authorize $150,000, is that all right with you?
I'm, I'm fine with wherever the council decides.
All right, not really $150,000, I'm sorry, $165, actually. So it's really the $175, and hold the, the 55.
Whatever, I'm fine with, with wherever the council.
Okay, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
I'd like to put a, like, amended motion on the floor.
Okay.
Um, based on what I heard, I'm hoping all of them will go through, based on what he's saying, but we don't know if the bottom falls out. And I just would like to make, put my motion on the floor, that everything is hold, is on, on hold with the exception of the boat launch and the stairs. So those are summer projects, and I think those two items would be, like, more beneficial to move forward right away and have the other ones hopefully will go through. But I just would like, so that would be $165,000?
I think that's what she was saying.
That's what I'm clarifying, because I didn't hear a motion be put on the floor. I heard it said.
We don't need a motion on this one.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So it'd be $165,000, or what was the number then?
Correct.
$165,000. So that's, that's what I'll be supporting tonight, is the 165, though.
May I, the 165 is the 220, subtracting Snake Hill Park and.
Madam Mayor, I think I still have time. May I still say something?
Oh, I, I thought you were timed.
I did, but I, I just realized I did have a little bit of time. I, I'm still authorizing the 220. I'm just holding on the 55, right? 25, 30, 55, I'm correct. And authorizing him to go ahead and do the other ones after July.
Uh, so point of information?
Just a moment, please.
Because it's not what I.
Because all of this is after July 1st anyways. So authorizing the 120 and the 145, which is 165, and then the 25 and the 30 can be held until December 31st. I know that's not ideal, but if things change, then do what you have to do. And I'm hoping we'll know something before December 31st. All right, thank you.
So, Councilordalyn has basically asked for the same thing. It's the 45 for the stairs and the 120 for the boat ramp to be held.
Correct. Uh, not be held, to move forward.
I mean, to be, to move forward, and those combined would leave a balance of $55,000 to hold. So the hold amount is $55,000. That has been discussed.
That's what I just.
I'm just clarifying for everybody. There were, that, that sounds right to me.
And I do agree, the boat launch is a big need.
All right, so, Council Merritt?
Uh, the work on the boat launch, that won't interfere physically or however with the baseball park?
No. No, and in all likelihood, going through deep permitting and all of that, the boat launch probably wouldn't be started until after the baseball season anyway.
Okay.
Council Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How far is the nearest boat launch to this boat launch? And does it put boats in the same waterway?
No. Bayberry Lane or Noank. You've got two, oh, Esquire Point. That's small.
Yeah, that's, that's a different.
Small.
Body of water.
Well, the.
Council Pacino has the floor.
Is the problem.
Council Merritt? Council Pacino has the floor.
Is there a boat launch at Bluff Point State Park?
Yes.
There is?
There is, okay. So by distance, that would be the closest?
On the same river.
Yeah.
So if this wasn't done until next spring, people could use Bluff Point until, till next spring?
Yes.
If they needed to. Okay, and it puts in the same waterway. Okay, thank you.
Point of information?
Your question?
My understanding, though, the capacity and the size of boat that it launches is different, is that correct? I think it is.
I'm not familiar with the boat launch at, at Bluff Point, so I can't speak to the difference in types of boats that the different boat launches serve.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Berry, how much does the design do you think will cost on the boat launch? Because it's repli, design and replace. So how much is the design going to cost?
The council actually funded some of the design work in this current fiscal year, and we're going, we're going through that now. There'll be some additional design work. I, I couldn't say how much of this 120 is designed. It, most of it would be actual construction.
Because my thought is, if you're designing, you might not be able to put it until maybe next spring anyway.
It, it all depends on the deep permitting process. And we, we have to do core samples because the, it's, the planned replacement, the boat launch is going out further, because the problem is now, the boat launch, the boaters can only go on so far, and then the trailer drops off the end of the launch.
Yeah.
And.
I'm just trying to separate, what do you need for the design and planning part of this, out of this 120, and what is remaining?
Mayor?
You don't have to get that specific. You could generally direct me to release the amount needed for, to finish the engineering.
Okay. Because I'm thinking, if the bottom does drop out, I'd rather be more cautious and conservative with what we, and hold more back, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I still got a little time.
What is, what's going on? I thought you yielded as well.
I never yielded.
I thought you were done. I apologize. I'm.
That's okay.
Continue.
Not a problem. So my, my last question, and then I will yield the floor, is if we decide to hold this 120, and you can find out that that boat ramp at Bluff Point is not what we would like it to be, we can always then not hold it. It's just a, Mr. Burt, we're not going to hold that money, correct? We don't have to come back to council?
Right, no.
Okay. I yield my time.
Thank you. I'm good with just doing Snake Hill and Noank, and maybe the design engineering part of Parazotti to be expensed sooner than, and then the remaining left later. I don't even know how to put this up to a question, or where people stand. So I think you're going to have to state what you would like to be held or not held, and we'll figure this one out. Council Merritt?
I would like to see the boat launch and Snake Hill done.
You also have to vote on the $200,000 on the floor. There's $200,000 on the floor for.
Two 20.
I mean.
Yeah.
Two 20.
Two 20. I apologize, I wrote down the wrong number. Two 20? So you have to vote on that, and then tell me, and tell Mr. Burt what you think would be best to hold.
He just said it.
No, I would.
Do you vote yes on the 220?
Yeah, I'll go 220.
Okay, and what would, and if he was going to hold any.
Yeah.
What back, what would you like to not be held back?
I would not like the stairs on Snake Hill, obviously. We're going to go into a big project down there, and we might as well go through the entire project, is the area of Noank.
Okay.
Get that done all at once. We do break a lot of these projects up. We keep, to coin an old phrase, we keep kicking it down the road, and it never gets done.
Point of order?
Your point of order?
That this is turning into debate?
You're right.
I'm sorry?
It's turning into debate. Can you just, which ones would you like not withheld?
I was just supporting my remarks. And, uh, the boat launch, I go along with that, so I would deduct or put into hold the $42,000 for the basketball courts, $50,000 for the shady, shade structure, 46.
No, those are next, those are another year.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
220, 138. Where's the 138?
It, don't.
No, I know we have 220, but where's the 138?
It's next year, Merritt.
And who is that for?
No.
That's for next, that's F2027.
Right, okay. That's redoing the two basketball courts, repainting them. Well, so be it.
Not up for discussion.
Thank you. Council Bordalyn?
Um, I'm obviously moving forward with full 220. The things I'd like to see to move forward, though, and not be held, would be the boat launch and the stairs in Noank.
Okay, Council Pacino? On the 220?
I'm voting for the 220.
Yes.
And to go forward with Snake Hill only.
Thank you. Council Rusk, on the 220? Council Russ, on the 220?
Yes, and Snake Hill, and boat launch.
Jones?
Yes, on the 220, and the town manager can make whatever decision he needs to make.
That's not a vote, or not telling, that's not giving direction. You have to, I'm counting numbers here, so...
Sneaky hill.
Council Gieske?
Snake Hill and Parazotti boat launch. Well, yes, and then holds, no, do Snake Hill and Parazotti boat launch, so hold the Bel Air and Pickable.
Council Ruth Parker, 220?
Yes, for the 220, and I believe I stated 165, which is the two I suggested.
Alright, I am a yes on the 220. And I am good on releasing for Snake Hill. And for the design, only on Parazotti boat launch. Okay, you have direction?
No.
You have consensus to go forward with Snake Hill. And then you have consensus to go forward with Parazotti boat launch.
Got it.
And the numbers, please, overall.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
No, numbers overall. What's the vote overall?
No.
You didn't say it yet.
Total vote.
Total vote, yeah, I'm sorry.
That passes eight, to zero, to zero. Up next?
Point of information?
Your question?
If, if we're definitely going to go forward with the boat launch, then Mr. Berry does not have to check into Bluff Point boat launch at all.
Thank you.
Just throwing it out there. I don't need the information, it's not usual, usual.
Council Parker, do you want to take B for the Community Connectivity Program?
So, B for?
Next on page, page one.
I make the motion for $60,000.
Second.
Okay, Parker, second by Jones.
Mayor, this is another one I'm recommending holding to the end of the year.
Okay. But we will vote on the number, and he is recommending that we hold.
Will that be the vote?
You will vote on the number, and you will say if you...
Okay.
Are opposed to holding. Alright, I see no hands. So you'll vote on the 60, and if you are okay holding, you have to say nothing. Okay? If you are against holding it, then you would say you have, you have an issue. Council Mayor, 60,000?
Yes.
Council Board Line?
I'm for it, and with, I don't want it held.
Pacino?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gieske?
No, but if it passes, quit holding.
Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes seven to one to zero, and you can hold that one. Up next, C for Golf Course Improvement Plan. Up next is Council Gieske.
I just have a point of information on that number, with seven to what?
To one.
Seven to one to zero?
And the one was a...
Council Gieske, opposed.
Okay.
Council Gieske, you want to take C four?
Yeah. Motion to approve the golf course improvement plan of 270, $207,000, so moved.
Second. Moved by Gieske, seconded by Parker.
So I recommend the 200,000 that's slated for Capital Project Reserve Fund to come out of the golf fund balance.
I'll move that. 200,000 from the golf fund balance. Sir, second?
Second.
Mark, feel free to say you want it reimbursed if possible. I don't want to stifle you.
I think I got my answer earlier today, so...
Council Board Line?
Just to Mark Berry, like, are you guys, is this good that it's coming out of that account, or is that going to affect anything, or?
So our goal was to, when I say our goal, the golf course goal was to rely less on capital funding from the general fund, and transition towards being able to pay capital expenses through the golf course. And that was out of the impetus for the whole discussion about rates and whatnot. Things have clearly changed as of the FYE 24 audit. We have $1,019,000 in fund balance. So, yes, we could absorb that deduction from fund balance at, at this time. But we don't know, I mean, I can tell you, we're $130,000 behind where we were last year through March. Part of that, though, is because we held off on selling new seasons passes until we had figured out. So there's a, a bit of a lag and a backlog of seasons pass holder applications, so it's a little bit too early to tell where we're going to end up at the end of this fiscal year. But I think, to answer your question, yes. We could absorb the $200,000 coming out of the golf course fund balance.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Can we look at page 214 very quickly, where it says, under section four, item C, it says 207 is already coming out of the golf course fund balance, and there's not seven remaining in the cap, like...
There was seven coming out of golf course, 200 coming out of Capital Project Reserve Fund.
I know, but can you look at page 214? Am I reading it incorrectly?
I just didn't have the numbers there. But it does say golf course fund balance, comma, CIP fund balance. But the, the split was seven from the golf course, 200 from CIP fund balance. So now what's requested is the entire 2,000, 207,000 from the CIP for the golf course.
Yeah, I understand that, that's what I, that's what's the motion on the floor. But what I'm saying is, on page 214, when you look at C four, it already says there's 207 coming out of other sources of funds.
Yeah, because they're both other. They're both other, 200,000 out of Capital Projects Reserve Fund, which is other, 7,000 on golf course, which is also other. None of this is general fund dollars, right here.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Point of information?
Your question.
So where it says at the top of that source of funds, Capital Reserve Fund, is that supposed to be general fund balance?
That left one, yes. The Capital Reserve Fund is the general fund. Everything else is other. And then when you go to individual project sheets, you can see the breakdown.
Well, I make a copy every year and use this as my little cheat sheet, thank you. Alright. Alright, seeing no other hands on this one, we'll take a vote. Council Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Council Board Line?
Yep.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Russ?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gieske?
Yep.
Council Parker?
Yes.
And also a yes? That passes eight to zero to zero. Alright, up next, D four, Park Investment ADA Compliance. This is Council Jones.
Capital Improvement Program, D four, Park Investment ADA Compliance, Parks and Recreation. I move the number 124,000, so moved.
Second?
And this is one more I recommend...
Wait, no, moved by Jones, seconded by Board Line, sorry. Go ahead.
This is also one I'm recommending holding up.
Alright, I see no hands, so we're going to take a vote on the 124,000. If you are opposed to holding, you should say so. Council Mayor?
No.
No on the 124,000?
That's going to hold up the project if we do not approve it.
No, you can, you're approving the dollar amount, or?
Okay, then we're holding it, yes.
And then hold until December, if you're against holding it until, like, six months?
No, December.
Okay, you're, so you are a yes on?
Yes.
Council Board Line?
I agree with moving forward with it, but I don't agree with holding.
So you approved 124?
I approved the money, and I don't agree holding the project for six months. I think it should be done, because it's ABA.
Thank you. Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Russ?
Yes, and don't hold.
And don't hold?
Correct.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gieske?
Yes, and don't hold.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero, and with a hold. Up next is E four. Council Russ?
E four, Athletic Field Development. I move the number 190,000.
Second? Motion by Russ, seconded by Board Line?
And this is also one I'm recommending holding?
Council Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I'm going back between 214, what page are we on?
223.
223, thank you. I think that, you know, this is to install an irrigation system, regrade and receive field two at the community center. I think this is imperative to be done, just because of what we've heard from our community. And I think we really should start maintaining our fields a lot better. But I will be in favor of holding it, because I think this can be done in the springtime and not necessarily the summer, because they're going to be in the middle of the season over the summer. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
Council Board Line?
To Mark Berry, I, what would this, if it was held, what will it change for you guys?
We would probably push this project off. The best time to do this project would be the fall. That's the best time to grow grass. So if we put this project off until December, it would be the following fall that we would actually probably do the work. And that field would be out of commission for a year, so now talking the fall, I think, of '27, before the field would be available. Because we waited an entire year to let the grass get established. That's what we did with the Field One, which is the one closest to Route One at the community center. And, you know, that field has held up well and is getting a lot of use. So this would hold us up 16 months.
Is that something that you support?
If I'm doing my math right.
Is that something you support waiting on, or do you want to get this moving?
In the interest of not seeing any staff get cut, I will hold off on this.
Thank you. Alright, so the number on the floor is 190,000. And if you are against holding it, you should speak up. But we are voting on the 190,000, and then you can give your caveat if you're against it. Council Mayor?
I'm, I'm going to vote yes on the 190,000.
Okay. Council Board Line?
I vote yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Russ is absent at the moment? Council Jones?
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
Council Gieske?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes seven to zero to zero, and holding has been approved. Noank, no neighborhood park.
It's a zero.
That's a zero, we don't have to do anything with that, right? Going on to G four? No, that's H, I'm sorry. H four. Alright. Council Pacino? That is on page 226.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Capital Improvement Program, project detail, Playground Replacement Plan, Parks and Recreation. I move $100,000.
Second? By Pacino, seconded by Board Line?
And again, this is why I'm recommending holding.
Council Gieske?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to put an amendment of zero on the floor, I think this will... Oh wait, I think it's too time. I want to...
What, what is happening? What?
So I, I'm going to take my turn, that's what I'll do first.
You just go to amendment.
I, I think this can wait a year. I think that...
You have an amendment?
I will be making an amendment, that I will be moving. Sorry for the confusion. I think this can personally wait a year. I know that our playgrounds are, some are in good shape, some are in bad shape, but I think we should wait and hold off in the interest of the taxpayer, so I'm going to make an amendment for $0.
I have a second on that one. Amendment, this is crossed out, no second. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in favor of the holding of these projects, and I think that's a prudent move in the time we, with what's going on. My question is really, with holding all these, these things, are these things going to kind of back up? Like, I noticed this one has 100,000 here, and then it looks like the construction is the following year. Does it, does everything sort of get piled up on each other by, by doing that?
Yeah, that's actually a discussion I had with the manager of Parks and Open Space today, is, you know, all of these projects would be starting sometime next spring. And then, as we get into the FYE 27 budget, you know, all these other projects, if approved, will be coming online, so there would be certainly some compression.
I understand.
Yes.
You have the, you can handle that, or you think that's, you can be okay with that?
Well, thankfully, you know, the CIPs, there's some flexibility. You've got a five-year window to do it. So we would have to, I think we would address the FYE, FYE 26 projects first, and then continue to, to move through the other projects if they were funded, the FYE 27, if they were funded.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not against the holding, I think that that's the right thing to be doing. We just don't have a clue what's going to happen six months from now, so there's no need to do these steps. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It'll also give you time to finish up all your own ARPA projects.
Yes.
Because you had a lot of those come out, I'm sure.
Thank you all.
Dizzy, busy. Alright then, we'll take a vote on the 100,000, and that is with a hold. And if you are opposed to the hold, you should speak up. Council Mayor?
Yes.
Council Board Line?
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Russ?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gieske?
No, but still a hold.
No, but still a hold.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am a yes. That is seven to one to zero with Gajaski in the negative. Up next.
5B.
I'm sorry, what number?
5B.
5B? All right, we're on page 231. Counselor Merritt, you want to take this one? On page 231.
Fitch High School Manufacturing Center. Under, is that Board of Ed this is going to be under, or just education?
Yes, and Mr. Gilpatrick's coming up to answer your questions.
Second.
He didn't put a number.
You didn't put the number on the floor, did you?
Not yet. Requested for FY26 is the amount of $100,000.
Second? Moved by Merritt, seconded by Bordeland.
I'm just, I was just going to point out that these are grant funds anticipated.
Well, welcome back. Want to introduce yourself and give us a synopsis?
I was saying Gilpatrick, facilities for the Groton Board of Ed. I apologize, but my phone died with my notes on the phone, so if I could get a little more on this particular item, I'd appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. There was, there was noise.
Yeah, my notes, my notes, my phone is dead, and my notes are on the phone. So I don't have a paper copy of what we're talking about.
Okay, so what up, what is up next is the Groton Public Schools is in working in coordination with Electric Boat to develop a manufacturing center at Fitch High School. Architectural plans will be needed to move this project to the construction stage. At this time, it is anticipated with grant funding. Requested for FY26 are funds in the estimated amount of $100,000.
Yeah, so we're working with Electric Boat on this project. This would be a part of the school-to-work program at the school. And so this is a part of that program, and we would, we'd like to move forward this. It would actually be constructed within the garage area of the high school.
It's going to be part of our career, the pathways program at the high schools.
So is this an acceptance of the grant? Is that basically what we're doing here? Because it says the funds are coming from other grant funding.
I think they put in for a grant, but we didn't get it.
It's been, it's been submitted. We're waiting on the answer to that.
Mr. Burke, can, if we approve this amount, if they don't get the grant, then what?
Right now, we haven't designated a different, we'd have to tonight designate a different funding source, and then if they get the grant, that would relieve that funding source. So if you wanted to proceed with it, I would say to use the CIP fund balance for the 100,000. And again, if they get the grant, then we'll just hold those dollars.
But it's also marked on here that it's coming out of other, and it says grant funding, is it?
As I say, they don't know if they have the grant yet, though.
Then why, I don't understand why it's here. I'm not sure why it's on our, like, our CIPs and why they, like, usually typically...
You were probably hoping you'd hear about the grant by now.
We expected to hear about it, yes.
I think the hope was that it's something they facilitated. They hoped they would know about the grant by the time it actually came forward. They don't. So if the council wants to fund it, we could schedule it for 100,000 out of the CIP fund balance. And then if they did get that grant, then we would just hold our money.
Or could we, let me just ask, just because...
Or you could...
This is unusual, so...
Or you put it through, and if it doesn't come through, it doesn't go.
I'm just wondering, like, why don't they come to us like it has, they typically would? When they get a grant, they come to us at a council meeting and say, and we have to approve the grant receipt.
This isn't that unusual. Remember, didn't we do similar with auditorium? Yeah.
With what?
Remember, we did the same thing with auditorium last year for CIPs? This is not that unusual.
So they're asking us to fund it, front, front fund it, is what you're saying?
Right. They were hoping they would know about the grant by now, but they don't.
And we have to specify the funding then?
Yes.
Counselor Bordeland?
Thank you. As a firm believer in having all pathways, not every student is necessarily going to leave Fitch and go to college, as we know. And there is a shortage of workforce readiness, of people maybe not wanting to go to college and pursue degrees. You know, there's less people joining law enforcement and other careers that, you know, maybe they do a trade first, or carpentry, EB's having trouble getting folks. I was just at a event, actually, the Christian of Ohio, and with my son there, one of the head areas captains of the region looked at my son and said, "Thank you for, you know, joining and wanting to become an officer of the Navy and going to Merchant's Marriage or College, but we really need you in the Department of Defense as a civilian as well, just as equally right now." They can't get people into trades. And this opportunity would be great for any military child that's planning to pursue active-duty military straight out of high school, or going straight to EB. This type of manufacturing thing is valuable to the fleet of the military, on subs, surface, Army, if you want it to be a CB or anything. I mean, this is just a great exposure. When I was growing up, we had carpentry class and other things that really got our hands dirty. I think this is exactly what EB needs, and I think this puts us on the map. We do have RossoTech and other things, but this, to me, is like a no-brainer. This gives kids the skill set, and they can get out making a really good living right out of high school. I honestly think if they don't get the grant, I encourage us to, I mean, this would be an economic driver for us, and this is a career path for our students where we were, we're helping support our Navy, really. I mean, this is pretty cool that we could have an impact on supporting our federal government at a town-state level. I think it's amazing opportunity, and I, for $100,000, I mean, you know, if someone had a problem, I would even consider reconsidering some of the other votes to put this on the table, because I think this is a great opportunity. And if it doesn't come through, I think it's worth every penny for that $100,000 to come out of the CIP general fund for this type of program. So I'm in full support of it. I thank you guys for thinking outside the box and meeting the needs, not only of the federal government, but the military, as well as looking at our trades industry here and giving kids a pathway, because not every kid is looking to go to college. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this funding also going to help with housing the robotics lab?
That is currently at another building?
Yeah, the plan is to essentially set up a machine shop so that that could also be used for the robotics program, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Jones? Are you all finished? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, to the town manager, or chairman, Washington. If we fund this through CIP, does this get added to the MBR?
No.
No.
It stays separate.
No, is that I am in favor of this?
Yeah, no, I'm not. I think funding it is fine. It's a great idea, and it's a great opportunity. I just wanted to make sure it's not increasing the MBR.
CIP is our separate?
It's separate, okay. So I, I'm in favor of, when would you have anticipated the grant to have come?
Well, we were hoping it would already be here, so we're still waiting for it. We anticipate it should be here at any time.
And the grant is coming from, who's the funder of the grant?
I don't have that on my, that's not...
I can get back to you.
On my memory. We'll get back to you on that one.
If it's the federal government, it might be a problem. Okay, no, it's fine. I'm all set. Either way, it's fine.
Counselor Gajaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's a great idea. I am supportive. I do have a question for the town manager. Do we have to make a, if we want to, if they don't get the grant, do we have to make a separate motion to use CIP fund balance?
You're going to change it, you're going to make them, tell us right now to use CIP fund balance, and then we just won't use it if they get the grant?
Okay.
Yeah, we really don't, I mean, I think that's understood, right?
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to do anything. All right, well, good luck. Hope we get the grant. If you don't, okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Would you say if we don't, you'll give us $100,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. This is for all students who are interested in going into manufacturing, correct? Not just specific groups?
Yes, any student would be eligible, yes.
I just want to make that clear, because I don't want everybody who thought they couldn't get in because it was only for specific groups of people. I'm all for it, and if you guys get the grant, then it's fine, so I'm okay with it coming from CIP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're really excited about this manufacturing center.
Oh, I still have time, right?
Yep.
So I do remember having shops. I remember having shops in junior high with Fitch Junior was around, and we started there, and then we moved up to the high school. And I just find it funny how we are coming back to what we used to have, and we're putting it back in the schools when it probably shouldn't have been taken out in the first place. But that's my two cents. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino? Pacino, you've already spoken.
Don't speak twice on this?
No.
I'm all set, thank you.
Point of information?
What are you checking for?
Is this something we would put a hold on?
I've taken my question.
So there?
Is this something that would be a potential hold? Is there a timeline involved in this?
I'm not recommending a hold unless they thought it was appropriate.
No.
Okay, Beverly.
We're really excited about this.
No, I just didn't know if there was a potential for a hold on this, in case.
Okay.
I think there is a time sensitivity to it.
Point of information?
Your question?
Wouldn't this be after July 1st anyways?
It would be after July, but the hold for the six months.
No, it's, yeah, thank you.
All right. This question is for $100,000, and there's no question of a hold on this one, I guess. Counselor Merritt?
Yes.
Counselor Bordeland?
Yes, I'm excited.
Yes.
Counselor Pacino?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Rusk? Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gajaski?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero. All right, up next. By Counselor Parker, page 232.
Thank you, Madam, this is for the Fitch High School water heater. I make a motion for $85,000.
Second? That was F5.
F5.
For $85,000. Parker, seconded by Bordeland. Okay, what's going on with the water heater up at Fitch High School?
So for $85,000, this is not your residential water heater, obviously. It's actually what I consider a vertical boiler, essentially, tube boiler. So it's about nine foot tall. I can't put my arms around it. It is leaking, and so we like to have a lead and a lag situation with our equipment so that if one goes down, we still have that backup. At this point, we don't have a backup, and if something goes wrong with the other boiler, whether it's a burner or the tank itself, we would, we'd have to close school down without hot water.
Counselor Gajaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, through you to the town manager, isn't Fitch High School our emergency center in case we have a hurricane?
Yes.
So we would, we would need hot water for, if people have to stay there for an emergency. So I just wanted to get that on the record, and I'll be in full support.
I'm very proud of hot water.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love buying boilers. I haven't bought one in a while.
We do a lot.
Usually I buy them from Mr. Hanover. So I'm in full favor of getting my boiler quota up, and I think this is...
Thank you.
Counselor Rusk? Just one quick question. Can this even wait till July, or does this need to be done before then?
No, it would take some time to order and get it in anyway, so, yes.
Thank you. All right then, we'll take a vote on $85,000 for the Fitch High School water heater. Counselor Merritt?
Yes.
Counselor Bordeland?
Yes.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gajaski?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero. Up next. It's 5I, District Financial Software Upgrade. This is on page 235. And Counselor Gajaski, take this one.
Item 5F, District Financial Software Upgrade. Motion to approve $330,000. Still moved.
Second. By Gajaski, seconded by Parker.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I am recommending a hold on this. IT director, our IT director's working with Dr. Kennedy, and she does not like, it would be spending money until about this point anyhow, so it's believed it could wait.
Okay. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So through the mayor to the town manager, so this is the same system that the town uses?
Yes, and we're, we're going to the cloud, and then basically we're kind of moving in first. We have to get some stuff done, and then they'll be moving to the cloud.
And then our two systems, these two systems will be able to communicate and talk to each other with a lot more...
And access reports.
Get better reports. I know with a lot of the software that we buy of this kind, this sort of enterprise software, it usually has several years as different things that go out. This one, I noticed, is just on one year. Is this different, or will that eventually have some other components to it?
Hello, I'm Liz Spellman. I'm the IT director for the Town of Groton. We are currently in discussions with the Board of Education for whether it is better for the taxpayers to integrate them into our current MUNIS system. That also involves migrating to the cloud, generally. We're just determining timelines and feasibility. We've met with the finance folks to ensure that we can integrate our chart of accounts together, and it seems to be something that will work. I'm doing my due diligence and discussing the cloud environment with other towns that use their SaaS environment. And I'm also discussing with other towns how the integration went with the Board of Education so that we know what we're getting into, where the problems are going to be, and we have a better timeline, what we should do first, what we should do next. There are some expensive pieces of software that we'll be able to retire when some of the town projects get done. But I understand that the Board of Ed is also struggling with their current financial software, so we're weighing all of that.
Through the mayor, congratulations. Thank you for joining the Town of Groton.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. So I think the joining of these two pieces of software is paramount. And the other question, the other question I have is, by holding, I'm sort of looking at the next budget season. It would be really great to have these two things work together. Are we still going to be in time to be able to do that, or? No.
I think that'd be very optimistic.
That's optimistic.
It's very optimistic. Yeah, that's a very optimistic timeline.
Yeah, this is not an easy, ours, we're still not finished with our original transition ourselves.
We've had a lot of turnover in a handful of departments, and I'm really trying hard to push those projects forward again. I think the timeline, if we're being gracious, is about three months to migrate to the cloud, and then another eight to 12 to onboard the Board of Ed, just for the financial side. But we're also looking to migrate our HCM software, human resources and payroll. That is also, we're requesting funding for that in the town side, so I'll be talking to you guys about that a little later.
So, so putting a hold on this for the moment, isn't it actually going to slow that process down? Because you have a lot of other steps in between or before that anyways. Is that...
Correct, yes. This is, this is putting a hold on some of the money, because some of it is coming out of town funds, which we're not requesting, we put a hold on.
Okay.
So the first part of the investment will come out of a separate CIP.
Okay. So...
You had a question. Are there other modules for the Board of Ed?
Right, other modules go on here.
The, I'm sorry.
Like, you know, will they, after the fact, look into add HR or?
Yes, I believe the, the goal right now is to onboard you with HR as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, as far as like, you know, looking at, well, we wanted to kind of revamp, yeah, we wanted to go create as much of a streamline as possible, and, um, yeah, so everything that we can integrate into one system would be the best, I think, to my understanding.
Those costs are not in this, right?
Right. That's the ultimate goal moving on down the road, so there may be some supplementals, but hopefully like the bulk of this, and the rest will just be like add-on, a little, you know.
One thing I should mention too is, let's say we get through the federal budget in the fall, we're looking good, I could come back to the council and say, you know, we're past the federal budget, it's been adopted, we haven't been cut, so we could move earlier than we thought.
I mean, generally with these things, there's licensing fees that go on, and they get fairly expensive, and it's just municipal software is an expensive component, so.
It is.
It's, um, I don't know why people go into desktop or they should just go into this, but.
Generally speaking, when you move to the cloud, you do pay a little bit more of a premium, but with this particular piece of software, that seems to be the way their development is moving, so I think moving to the cloud with this software is a no-brainer. It's just going to get more and more expensive the longer that we wait, and I think we'll be locked out of some features if we continue to try to host this software on premises.
Okay, all right, I, so I'm, um, I'm fine with this. I'm fine with the holding. I'll take the judgment of the professionals and you. I don't have any problem with that. I just encourage to get these two systems to work together so that it, you know, however you do it, as soon as you can, just because it's something I think we've been lacking and we really need, so.
Just to clarify, it, it will be one system.
Okay.
And that's the intention for funding this, is to ensure that we're both using the same system, so we're not paying twice for licensing fees.
Okay, and it would be under the control of the town?
Yes, yes. The town would maintain control over most pieces of munis, whereas we can grant user management to the, the Board of Ed's IT department. I have been working very closely with Clint. We have got a good working relationship now, so.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Counselor Borlan.
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, I, this is something I've been very passionate about. I brought this up probably seven years ago when I was on the Education Committee, and I was concerned with the way that the budget was rolled out. I didn't think it had enough detail, and I didn't like the software then, so this is, like, it's great to see that it's here, so for me, I'm not voting to hold it. I don't care how long, I just want to see it allocated and moving forward. I think it really needs to happen, and the archaic system that the Board of Ed currently has is just, just kind of, it's archaic. So, this should have been done years ago, but it wasn't a cool idea back then, and it wasn't even, I think at one point, not that you guys were even on, but I think at one point, if I remember correctly, brought it up, brought it up, and it was asked, and I think they asked to join originally, and then they said no.
Right when I arrived, Mayor, if I may, right when I arrived, there was a intent to move them together, and the Board of Ed pulled back on that right when I was getting, arriving here.
Right, and that has nothing to do with the current people who are serving Superintendent or anybody, but the point is, is that, you know, it's, it's time, and it's just been something that just makes sense, so, um, with that, I support that we just fund it, and just, you know, I don't think we need to hold. I say we'll just keep moving. Like, this is long overdue, and it's, it's just going to only enhance the concerns that people have generated over time. Taxpayers, myself, and other even board members that have brought up concerns with the process, and if you're in this, the time of seeking a new financially finance director, it's just a no-brainer to let them know that you've made the commitment and we're moving in that direction. I just, um, anyway, I just, that will be my support. This has to go through, and this is one of the things I don't want to hold, even if the bottom falls out, as we keep saying, the sky falls. This is one of those things that we have to have, and I just think it's of utmost importance. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that there is a good consensus amongst the board that everyone wants to move in this direction. As you've noted in your own comments, the budget has been a struggle as far as like just getting the details laid out in a, in a fashion that is easily understood. That's, you know, obvious with our meetings, so, um, I would just encourage you to support this as strongly as you can so that we can move as confidently as we can forward with this, with this particular junction and joint operation.
Counselor Gasky.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I started my career helping out the town as a student representative of the Board of Education, and I worked out of budgets through this, and when I came over to the town side, it's night and day. This is, the town side is sometimes easier to read, um, so, and how to figure stuff out. So, I'll be of full support of this, and I hope it gives the board less, you know, asking of questions that I've seen them do in their Board of Ed meetings, and they have a, you know, it helps them with their budget process, so, uh, I'll be of full support, and I'm not going to hold because I think it's desperately needed, so, thank you.
Just a reminder, it's not likely to be spent regardless until that.
I know.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, in looking at what you, was brought forward, whose contract is going to be expiring in June 2026? This are, your, the Board of Ed contract, the Chair of Washington, may I ask, through the mayor?
Uh, yeah, that would be the e-finance contract, I believe. So, that is the board side.
Okay, so the contract's not even ended yet, so what happens if you break that contract before June 2026?
Well, to my understanding, there's a lot of preliminary work that needs to be done as far as like just getting the data prepared to, to, to join together, so I, I think, my understanding is that naturally it's going to occur about the time the contract comes to expire, is going to be the time that they, we'll be ready to go online with the munis system, roughly speaking.
Probably a year later. I mean, you'll probably be extending that contract, maybe a partial year if you can negotiate.
But then there'll be no penalty at that point. It'll be extended.
There would likely be an extra year of, uh, you know, year-to-year payments to e-finance during this process.
So, a hold will be fine because they're still in the middle of a contract. It's not going to hurt anything. You will have the money. It'll just be sitting there, and again, it takes a couple of years before you implement it anyways. I'm, you're anticipating about a two-year, almost a two, it could be two years.
Until e-finance can be removed, but it'll be after December before we're considering looking at spending these particular funds.
I'm for holding. Thank you.
All right, I have a question. Um, there were funds that were given for the financial software for the current, um, budget, and you still have those funds at the Board of Ed, is that correct? That should actually end up going into your non-lapsing fund, then, correct?
That's my understanding at this point, yeah.
Okay, so the two combined should help cover all this.
Correct.
And let me ask, um, uh, my IT Director. Will the software actually create these budgets, or is this a different software that you also use to help create the budgets that integrates? Or is it?
So, currently munis is not utilized to create the budget book because we don't have the Human Capital Management module live yet, so we're still utilizing some of our penimation software to get some of the reports that are in here, and then some of it's Word document or Excel documents.
Okay, so even if you get this, you're going to integrate with accounting, and it's all going to be wonderful because probably be much easier, but you will still probably need another app or software of some sort to help create the budget. Is that what you're saying?
Well, the hope is that we'll be going live with Human Capital Management to get our payroll and our HR up and running, and be able to utilize then the full extent to be able to produce the budget with munis at the same time as they're kind of coming onboard.
All right, so, so the town is even integrating from what you're using into a different? Is that what you're saying?
We kind of do, in tandem right now, a lot of manual entry on her end from, for the munis part, but a lot of the pieces are still being done in penimation in our old system because of the payroll aspect.
So, sorry. I have, I'm sorry. I can't.
You're having a night.
I am.
We see it. It's okay. I'm Adam myself, so don't worry about it. Okay, so you're hoping that in, in the future, the budgets will sort of be similar?
Yes, we're, we're trying to hopefully keep, uh, similar reporting of what we have, what everyone's used to seeing, but currently that's not necessarily being produced from munis, so we will need to get up and running with our HCM module too.
All right. Just so much more involved.
It will be definitely better than the system we use.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. I've watched your meetings. I've heard all of what you're talking about at your meetings. All right, I also am in favor of holding because as it said, it's, it can't be spent, it's not going to be spent in the next six months anyway, so. Counselor Merritt, are you, we're voting on 330,000, and please, and anybody, if you are against hold, please speak up. 330,000, page 235.
I'm in favor of this.
Yes? Counselor Borlan.
Yes, I'm in favor, and I'm not in favor of holding. I'd like it to move forward.
All right, Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gasky?
Aye, no hold.
What?
Aye, yes, and no hold. Sorry.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero, and, um, with a hold. Up next, J5, Fitch High School PA System Education, and this is on to Counselor Jones.
Capital Improvement Program, J5, Fitch High School PA System Education for the amount of $63,000. So moved.
Second, Parker. J5, $63,000. Are we, are we asking for a hold on this one?
No, my understanding that this is kind of on its last legs, and I would consider a PA system part of an emergency plan, but, I mean, they're better, so, as far as I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't recommend a hold unless they say otherwise.
All right, thank you. This is also, this was moved by Jones, seconded by Rusk. $63,000.
Aye.
Counselor Borlan.
Yeah, this is a no-brainer. I mean, this is long overdue, so I, I think it needs to move along. I don't know why I'm getting facial expressions down.
I'm sorry, I thought we were in the middle of a vote. Oh, okay.
My apologies. Just felt the tension. Um, I, um, think that this should move forward. It is a vital for safety, communication.
I'm sorry, excuse me, we're in the middle of a vote.
No, I didn't call the vote yet.
No, she.
That's the mistake.
Once again, I still have the floor.
It was a mistake.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, I'll try again.
I think this is a great, um, idea to move forward right away. It's definitely a safety concern. It's important to have, um, the best communicator possible for the staff, law enforcement, teachers, and the safety of the students, and it, you know, for all levels of, that PA system has been there forever. I'm amazed that it's lasted this long, so I do not want this held. I think we should fund it, fund it, send the money today. Thank you.
All right, same other hands. Let's take a vote. There you go now. You're up, you're up, Counselor Merritt. Yes.
I'm in support.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gasky?
Yes, with a good morning, Fitch.
And Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero.
Can I ask if that's with a hold or without?
No.
No, no hold?
No.
I didn't put, I didn't ask for a hold, so. All right, up next, school video cameras, education. This is I, this is K5. Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, CIP K5, um, school video cameras. I move the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Pacino.
Mayor, I was originally tentatively thinking of a hold, but I'd want to hear more from them about this, the need for safety.
All right, Mr. Kilpatrick, is your phone, it's not working. This is for school video cameras, which will fill in current gaps in camera coverage at the schools.
We've got a book.
Yeah, uh, this again is a security issue. We have a lot of gaps in, in the security system, or the camera system, and having added mutual link to our system, this will also give the police department and/or fire department, the first responders, access to live cameras throughout the building should an event occur.
Mayor? Is mutual link going now? Is it up and running?
They tested it in.
They've been testing it.
Yeah, they're testing it. And this, but with the video cameras, it allows the police to see exactly where the incident is in the school, other than having a map and they have to.
Don't tell us too much. You're not supposed to be talking security stuff and let the bad people know.
I would say withdraw the idea of holding.
Okay. Counselor Gasky, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I'm not going to ask my question.
Counselor Borlan.
Um, I can agree with the security, but most of these systems, you can look up online, and you can read what they do. I mean, the tip, but with that being said, it's a no-brainer. It's what needs to be done, and it, it's vital to have the most technology, got to invest in that stuff, so I'm happy to support it.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seeing that we have Captain B here, is there anything that the police department needs to do on their end for a system like this?
No, it's going to integrate with mutual link.
Okay.
Captain B said no, it's going to integrate with.
Mutual link.
Mutual link.
Okay.
So, I wanted to put that on record because you are not mic, miked up.
I'll speak louder next.
Uh, thank you. It's, I'm fine.
Okay. $100,000 for school video cameras. Counselor Merritt?
Yes.
Counselor Borlan?
Yes.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Gasky? What?
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero. I think that's it to you guys.
It is.
It is.
All right, you're all set. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion that we move to the people who are in the building, any CIPs that they are, since we are edging close to town block?
I've just got to go through the list. Because then we have to make motions to put it in different orders. And then we're going to bounce it all around. All right, up next, Town Hall Complex, page 239. Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town Hall Complex, I move $235,000.
Second.
Moved by Pacino, seconded by Rusk. All right.
No. I thought I was Borlan, so I'm sorry.
She did. They both did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, C6.
Mayor? I recommend at least holding the 160,000 for the parking lot, and I'd want to hear a little more about the curtain wall.
Okay, hold.
Okay, yeah, this project is divided into two parts, $160,000 for the, um, improvements for traffic timing in the parking lot between, combined between Town Hall and the community center, and also the second part is for the design of the replacement for the large curtain wall that's the, um, it's, is the exterior wall of the, the old cafeteria, which is used as a multipurpose room by Parks and Rec for a lot of their programs. It's a steel, painted brown wall, you've probably seen it faces Town Hall. It's in pretty poor condition. It's energy inefficient, so we're looking to get a design to replace. So we're looking to get a design to replace that. We put the construction funds in next year. I know we haven't really decided what we're going to do ultimately with the community center, but my feeling is that this wall would be replaced as part of any future project anyway. So I want to move forward this because it's in, you know, bad shape now and I don't want to wait.
So I'm only recommending the 160, be held then?
All right, Town Manager is requesting a hold 160. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, Mr. Hannover, can you just tell us which wall is this, is that? It's the exterior wall or interior?
Yeah, it's the exterior wall. If you come into the main entrance, which is kind of in the middle of the community center now, it's to the right there. It's a large, it's fairly tall because it's the old cafeteria wall. It's probably 25 or 30 feet high. It's a steel frame with steel panels, painted brown. It's got some windows in it, some doors.
That's a hall with all the windows along it, like martial arts and things?
Yeah, yeah.
So the built, the wall's deteriorating, is that?
Yeah, it's all, it's rusty, it leaks. You know, it's, I don't even know if it's insulated, to be honest with you.
Okay. And this is for engineering, or planning and engineering?
This is for planning, yes, for.
And what's the normal, anticipated time for doing the engineering?
Probably about four to six months.
So even holding doesn't, it all would go in the normal cycle anyways, so.
And we do our CIPs for the new year, around the end of the year, so we probably wouldn't want to hold this.
Kind of total that, okay.
Exactly.
And is there any safety issue currently?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, it's just a wall.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, C6, there's 235,000 on the floor. Here's been a request to hold 160,000. If you are opposed to that, you should speak up. I want it to your turn to vote. We are voting on the 235,000. Council Merritt?
Yes.
Council Bordalyn?
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Rusk?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gajaski?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero, and it passes with a hold. Up next is F6, this is, Council Merritt, you want to take that? It's on page 240.
Town Hall Annex Complex 20 Bay Garage. It's $380,000 for construction. This is for the roof.
All right, moved by Merritt. Seconded by Parker.
Yes, last, this past year, we had the funds approved for the design of this roof replacement. This is our 20 bay garage where we keep a lot of our equipment in it. The design is underway now, and the architect has given us a cost estimate to do the replacement of the roof and the coping to withstand hurricane-force winds, to be around 380,000.
Mr. Bur, are you requesting a hold?
No.
I shall move.
All right, we're going to take a vote on this one. I don't see any hands. 380,000 for the roof at the Town Hall Annex Complex 20 Bay Garage. Council Merritt?
Aye.
Council Bordalyn?
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Council Rusk?
Aye.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gajaski?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. That passes eight to zero to zero. All right, up next, Spicer House Boat, Spicer House Boathouse. Council Parker?
Make a motion for 30,000.
Second.
Can I make an amendment?
Seconded by, motion moved by Parker, seconded by Bordalyn.
I'm going to make an amendment.
Council Parker, your amendment.
Zero.
Second.
Amendment by Parker, seconded by Gajaski.
I believe the money will be used from a grant?
Well, I'll let Greg explain, but the money's no longer needed.
Yeah, we have a $60,000 grant from DECD with the state to do the roof repair. And we actually just went out to bid with it. We included the siding repairs and repainting as well. And we got some very favorable bid results, so we're able to do the whole project with the $60,000 grant. So we don't need this funding any longer.
So do we, point of information?
Your question?
So do we need to put it on the floor?
Zero on the floor now. Yeah, there's amended motion by Parker, seconded by Gajaski for zero. All right, seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on zero for the Spicer House Boathouse. Council Merritt?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Rusk?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Zero on the floor passes with the amended motion from, with eight to zero to zero. Up next is the Golf Course Facilities Clubhouse, public building. This is on page 242. Council Gajaski, you want to take that one?
Wanting to approve, I am 6K Golf Course Facilities Clubhouse for 30,000 dollars.
Second.
Moved by Gajaski, seconded by Parker.
These are funds to do some minor repairs and repainting of what is known as the cart building, which is the building along Plant Street that's right next to the golf course. It has the same architectural features, built around the same time it was the former caddy shack, way back when the building was built. It's now used for storage of some, like the beverage carts and a few other things that the golf course uses it, uses. But, you know, it is in, fallen in disrepair, so we just have identified this for a number of years. And we want to go ahead and do the minor repairs and repaint it for the 30,000.
Mayor? Can you just tell me where the cart building is? Exactly this building that's being painted?
It's right between the parking lot on Plant Street and the clubhouse itself. It's a, I don't know, maybe 50 by 30-foot size.
It's off to the right when you're looking at the building. It's off to the right.
If you're looking to the right, it's to the right.
What I told you about, that was so bad.
No, everybody says it's bad. This is a common complaint.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's very visible. I mean, everybody walks by it when they go to the clubhouse from the par, in par four restaurants.
You're absolutely right. Is this a hold or no?
I would, I would, not unless Greg thought so, this one. What would your timeline be if you had the money in July?
We could probably get this done this fall.
I'd say, yeah, it's long overdue.
All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on K6 for 30,000. Council Merritt?
Yes.
Council Bordalyn?
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Rusk? Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gajaski?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Passes eight to zero to zero. All right, I need to get another paper for the tracking. If you could. And then also, it is after 10 o'clock, and we have to have a consensus to move forward. If anybody is opposed to moving forward, please speak up. All right, we're moving forward. Thank you so much.
Point of information?
Your question?
If it's not really a contentious vote and there's a lot of discussion moving, can we just do all in favor versus doing, we'll call it, move a little bit faster? Just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, I can try and do that.
Thank you.
I still have to write them all in, I guess.
Yeah. All in favor, but just move it.
All right, up next is L6, this is on page 243. Council Jones?
Capital Improvement Program, L6, leased buildings, public buildings, move the number 60,000. So move?
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Gajaski.
Okay, this is 60,000 to do some repairs and repainting of the Groton Ambulance Building. This is a building the town leases to the Groton Ambulance. And we brought this project up last year, but we zeroed it out. Because, you know, under the lease agreement, we're not obligated, or the town is not obligated to do this work. But if they so choose to, they can fund it. And last year, decided not to, but the Groton Ambulance Association has again requested it this year for consideration.
Mayor? Just to point out that with our new funding policy, we'll basically pay for it one way or another. And it's in, getting in pretty rough shape.
Chet is here, he's waving. Did you want to come up?
I've been here all night, but we'll speak. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this topic. I've been a member of Groton Ambulance for over 25 years. And in that time, I don't remember the building ever being painted at all. I mean, yes, it is in the lease, but that was open to interpretation. And two years ago, I brought this to the town manager, and the quotes that we got at that time were 13,000. And it was, it didn't meet the threshold for a capital improvement plan. So the money was placed in the Public Works budget. So that money should still be there. So this project should be 13,000 less than what is estimated for the funding aspect.
Department funds lapse at the end of the year, so those monies go back into the general fund. So no, those monies aren't there.
That's not what you told me, but, okay.
It is, I know this, yeah.
It is late, so, but two years ago, this project would have cost us 13,000. Now, two years later, because of the deterioration and the further problems that we're having with the building, it has kind of moved up in priorities. And I've heard from many people say, oh, the sign looks great, now you just need to paint the building. So it is something that is needed. And the whole time, we were under the impression that if it's weather-related, then the town was responsible for it. So we would not be slacking on our end if we knew that we were responsible for it. But now, it is grown to a bigger project. So I would ask for your support in funding this project.
Thank you. I don't see any hands. So we're going to take a vote on L6. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That's going to pass eight to zero to zero. Thank you for coming and hanging out for all night. But thanks for coming. All right, up next is M6, this is on page 244. Council Rusk, want to take that one?
Capital Improvement Project, M6, lease. Move 100,000 for masonry repairs and replacement of existing built-up roof.
Second?
I move 100,000 for the police department.
Thank you. Moved by Rusk, seconded by Bordalyn.
All right, this is 100,000 for the design and contract document preparation for the replacement of the roof system on the entire police station. A lot of it, it's about 21,000 square feet. A lot of it dates back to the original 1979 building, so it's well past its useful life. We're also getting a lot of issues with the masonry brick, losing mortar joints, some of the concrete. If you ever go up to the main entrance, the wall caps are all spalling. So we need to address those. So we have an architect that we can use to review everything and come up with a project to really repair the entire envelope of the police station. So the construction project would be, you know, next year. This is just design.
I'm not seeing any hands. We're going to take a vote on 100,000 for M6. Oh, is there any hold on this one?
No.
All right. We're going to take a vote on M6 for 100,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. All right, up next, Golf Course Maintenance Facility Sprinkler System. This is O6, on page 245. Council Pacino?
Cap, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Capital Improvement Program, Golf Course Maintenance Facility Sprinkler System, O6. I move 280,000.
Second. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Rusk.
This money is for both design and construction for a sprinkler system and fire alarm system for the Shinnecost Golf Course Maintenance Building, which is off of Plant Street, adjacent to, I believe it's the eighth hole. This building is where Eric Morrison and his staff work out of. They store about a million and a half dollars' worth of equipment in this building. And it's one of the few buildings left in town that does not have a sprinkler system in it. So we are in the process, we just signed a contract. We have a contractor that's replacing the roof and the siding and all the doors, windows. So we just, once that's done, we would like to get a operating fire alarm system, sprinkler system in this building to protect the equipment.
Council Rusk?
Just noting that it's out of CIP fund balance. It's out of the other.
Do we have to put that on the floor that's coming out of the CIP fund balance reserve?
No, I'm not recommending a change on this.
But it says CIP fund balance.
CIP fund balance, yeah.
Oh, CIP fund balance, okay.
Not general fund.
Not general fund, okay. But we don't have to notate that in how we're paying for it?
It's in there, right?
Okay.
I just, sorry.
Council Rusk?
I just like the taxpayers to know that this isn't coming out. It's not raising taxes.
Seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on O6, 280,000 for the Golf Course Maintenance Facility Sprinkler System. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, on page 246, is Information Technology Infrastructure, on page 246. Council Merritt, you want to take that one?
Information Technology Infrastructure Activity Department for 150,000.
You got a second on that one?
Second.
Moved by Merritt, seconded by Gajaski.
Good evening. Hi, again. So this CIP covers infrastructure upgrades in our server room and across town. Programmed for 2026 will be replacement of, you know, some of those switches that are end-of-life. The battery backups for our critical infrastructure across town, some of them need to be replaced as well. And it's also going to fund our transition to utilize more of the Microsoft 365 infrastructure. Currently, we only use their email. We don't use any of their shared storage. We don't use Teams. So bringing that onboard will enhance collaboration across the town.
Okay. I am not seeing any hands. We're going to take a vote on A7 for 150,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. All right, up next, on page 247 is B7, Enterprise Resource Technology. I mean, Resource Planning. Councilor Parker?
Make a motion for $50,000.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Gajaski.
Mayor?
Yes.
I am recommending a hold on this one.
Okay, go ahead. So this CIP covers user training, as it says, for various systems across town, most notably Munis. And it can certainly be held.
Okay. Councilor Rusk?
Oh, I'm sorry, I figured it out. My apologies.
You're done? All right. Seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on this one. We're going to have to roll call, because if you are against the hold, you have to specifically say so. Councilor Merritt, we're voting on the $50,000? $50,000 for B7 Enterprise Resource Planning.
Is there a hold included in this?
You can say you are against the hold after you vote for the number.
I'll vote the number, I'm against. No, I'll go along with the hold.
So you're in favor of the number?
Yep.
Councilor Bordelain?
I'm also in favor.
Yes? Council Pacino?
Aye.
Council Rusk? Council Jones?
Aye.
Council Gajaski?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes, and there is, you can hold on that one, Mr. Burd. Up next, page 248, Councilor Gajaski on C7.
Item C7, Enterprise Information Management System, EIMS, acquisition. I motion to approve $310,000.
Second. Moved by Gajaski, seconded by Rusk.
So these are funds that I referenced earlier when we were discussing the Board of Ed CIP. These are the funds that we will be beginning to use when we start migrating to the cloud. This is also going to cover migration for fleet and work order software for public works, which will help us drop a nearly six-figure contract, once that's complete.
Sounds great. I'm not seeing any hands. We're going to take a vote on C7 for $310,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Was this a hold, Mr. Burd?
No.
All right, that passes eight to zero to zero. All right, up next is on page 249. Council Jones, you want to take D7 IT?
D7, Capital Improvement Program. D7 IT Security Technology, in the amount of $30,000, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Rusk.
Mayor? I am recommending a hold, based on the director's recommendation.
We don't have any significant hardware replacements that are required this year for our IT security costs, so most of this will be outside resources to help with incident response, preparedness, updating our disaster recovery plans. And a lot of that, the heavy lifting can be done in-house. And if the bottom falls out on our funding, it can even be postponed.
I'm not seeing any hands. We're going to vote on the $30,000, and if you are, if you would, are opposed and would like to hold it, you have to speak up. Council Merritt, we're voting on the $30,000 for the IT Security Technology.
I'll say no.
Council Bordelain?
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Rusk?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Gajaski?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes seven to one to zero, and that, you can hold that, Mr. Burd. All right, then.
Thank you.
We're on to F7. Yes, F7. This is on page 250. Council Rusk?
I make a motion for $250,000 for F7 to be paid out of CIP fund balance.
Second.
Moved by Rusk, seconded by Pacino. Lou?
Good evening. So I have Chek Nicky, who's the President of the Ground Fire Officers Association, Association up here, sorry, I'm as tired as you guys are, just to show a little support for this. So the money's going to be used for, to replace an aging station alert system. If you're not familiar with the station alert system is, it's when the dispatcher receives a telephone call from the, remember the community reporting an emergency where fire services are needed? The dispatcher will send out a voice tone to the fire department that is required, and then send out a series of tones. I can repeat the tones to the TV show, and I'm going to date myself here, "Emergency" from the 70s. Remember those loud tones that went off in the stations? So that's kind of similar to what we have now in place. It's a system that's 25 years old, well beyond its service life. We're constantly paying for service people to come out and repair it. Any failure could result in delay of service to calls to service. So the system we're looking at is an IP-based system, which will, it's more accurate, fast. It allows for more controls inside the fire station, better alerting the different types of tones to, instead of shocking people in the middle of the night to wake up to go to a call, it kind of ramps up slowly. It can actually control lights. It's quite a robust system. I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
Actually, there's been studies through the International Association of Firefighters that the tones actually have long-lasting health effects cardiac-wise, and they recommend the new ramp-up tones. And this system is at the end of life, and I am here as the representative of the Groton Fire Officers. We have unanimous support of all the fire chiefs and EMS departments that are serviced by Groton Fire Alarm. And we felt it strong enough to show our support and explain the importance of this project.
And this covers all the fire departments?
That is correct, yes.
All of Groton, including city, everywhere?
Correct.
And the ambulances?
And the ambulances as well.
Yes.
Council Bordelain?
Actually, I've seen one of these systems actually inter, I don't know if it's the same brand, but something, what you're talking about. I think, you know, what you speak of, the sounds can be, there's some folks that spoke about this regarding being a volunteer in the fire department, and they served in the military, and they were volunteers, and that sound that you're talking about, the archaic one we have, they had, and the stress it caused, you know, it just kind of, that type of sound, it does have some health effects for certain people, and even people who maybe don't have that same experience that maybe this person who spoke on this topic at another thing. But I have seen one of these systems in play, and it is much smoother, even folks that aren't going to be responding that are in the building, it's not as, you know, it doesn't affect them entirely, because the people that are already up that are maybe manning phones, like, and it's calling other, you know, it just, it makes sense. It's just a needed thing across the board, and I think it would enhance, and I love that it's for all of the, you know, emergency response buildings, so.
Like I said, it's, it's
Thank you.
Outlived its shelf life. I mean, it's, we were thinking about it today, and the best we can think of is, it's probably older than 25 years.
Oh, yeah.
Since the expansion of the 911 center. So like I said, it's antiquated push buttons, so this will be the software-based system.
And any, when I was doing my research on the system, that's where I was finding some videos, and I got to see the simulation of how, like, some of them go off, and, you know, when the people were speaking about them. Do we have any implemented in any neighboring towns already?
So I believe the city of London uses this system, but there are other communities around us that still have the old
Yeah, that's what I was finding.
System like we are currently using, and they are also looking to move forward with replacing them.
Thank you.
All right. This isn't one to hold, is it?
No.
All right, we're going to take a vote on F7, $250,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right? That passes eight to zero to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to our next item. Page 251 is Planning Public Works Electronic Document Management System, J7. That would be, Council Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Capital Improvement Program, Project J7, Planning Public Works Electronic Document Management System. I move $150,000.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Pacino, seconded by Jones. This is technology.
Greg and John are the leads.
Okay. Greg just does it all.
Good evening, everyone.
Surprised us there. All right, you want to give us a synopsis on this one?
Sure, Greg, I'll take the lead. So Public Works in planning and development have been working on this project for a couple of years now. We did not ask for any funding last year. We did receive $125,000 in fiscal year '24. And this is basically, we share storage space with Public Works, the Town Clerk's Office, and our vault in the annex, and many of our files. We have to keep a lot of documents, a lot of document storage, many things that are often getting requested, copies by the public, FOIA. And we're trying to scan those documents to save, both on storage space, but also to get them all out on the web, so that people can go through historical files on building permits, plans, and other things that have happened in the past. Moving forward, this is going to be a multi-year project. We have spent, we have the equipment in place now, as far as the storage, working with our IT department. And we've begun the scanning of many of our documents for some of the building department, and working with Greg's department on some stuff as well for engineering some older-sized plans.
I'm not seeing any hands. We're going to take a vote on J7, Planning Public Works Public Document Management System for $150,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes seven to zero to zero. Councilor Parker was absent for that vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, A8. This one's Council Merritt. Would you like to take this one on page 252?
Okay. A8, Economic Assistance Fund, Planning on Economic Development. Request for this year is $50,000.
Moved by Merritt, seconded by Rusk.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment of zero dollars.
amended to amended to zero. Do you have a second on that one?
Second, Jones.
Moved by Gajaski? Seconded by Jones. Okay. Does anybody want to talk on the zero? Council Gajaski?
Yeah, I talked with the manager earlier about this today. And I can, but my understanding was it wasn't needed, but through you to the manager.
Director Reiner had recommended to me to eliminate this year that it's not needed.
Okie dokie. All right, then. A8, Economic Assistance Fund, with an amended motion, moved to zero. We'll take a vote on zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then that passes eight to zero to zero. All right. Up next, up next is page 254. D8, Councilor Parker, would you like to take that one?
Make a motion for $50,000.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Rusk.
Mayor?
Yes.
I am recommending a hold on this.
All right. So I have to do a roll call vote on this. We will be voting on the $50,000. If you are against the hold, you should speak, say something about that. So for D8, Economic Development Strategy, $50,000. Council Merritt, are you, $50,000?
No.
You don't, you're not passing the number?
No.
Okay. Council Bordelain?
No.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Council Rusk?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Aye.
Council Gajaski?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes six to zero to zero. I mean, six to two to zero. Good golly. Six to two to zero. I'm sorry about that. Six to two to zero, and that has a hold. Up next, page 255, Road and Drainage Standards Subdivision Regulations, E8. Council Gajaski, that's on page 25.
Item E8, Road and Drainage Standards and Subdivision Regulations, I move $85,000. So moved.
Second. Moved by Gajaski, seconded by Rusk.
Mayor?
Yes.
I am recommending a hold on this, though I'd like to hear a little more, just to double-check with the directors that they don't see the issue with that.
All right, who's taking this one?
I'll take the lead on this one.
Okay, go ahead.
So very quickly, our road and drainage standards were last, and our subdivision regulations were last updated in 2006. A lot has changed in that time, especially as how we look at drainage calculations for new roadways and new subdivisions. We've been kind of putting this off for a while. I think we've been asking for this, or at least talking about it for well over five years, and especially with the new standards that we're talking about with complete streets and kind of the future of our climate action plan. We want to make sure that we are consistent with all those other plans. This is something we'd have to hire an expert out to make this happen. Greg, anything else you want to add?
No, I think you covered it all, just, you know, with all the new, as you said, complete streets and environmental considerations we need for, we do our road designs, we do need to update this, it's been almost 25 years. But I have no problem holding it off until the first of the year either.
All right, we got to do a roll call vote. If you are opposed to the hold, you should speak up. Council Merritt, we're on page 255, $85,000 for the E8 Road and Drainage Standards and Subdivision Regulations. How do you vote?
No.
Council Bordelain?
I vote in favor, but I'm against the hold on this one. I think we should move forward.
Council Pacino?
Aye.
Rusk?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Gajaski?
Aye, against the hold.
Parker?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. That passes seven to one to zero, and you can hold that one. Up next, page 256, A10 Sewer Line Infrastructure Repair. Counsel Jones.
Capital Improvement Project, A10 Sewer Line Infrastructure Repair, Water Pollution Control Facility, for the amount of $175,000. So moved.
Second. Moved by Jones, second by Portland. Okay.
Just as a reminder for everybody and for those watching, the next three CIPs are all funded out of the sewer user fees, not out of the general fund. These projects have been reviewed by the Water Pollution Control Authority and approved. And they're in their budget. So the first one is $175,000 to do some preliminary plans and cost estimates for extending the sanitary sewer up Route 117 to Center Groton at Route 184. There's a large, large parcel of land up there that are ripe for economic development. We've had a lot of interest from developers in the past. But the cost to extend sewers up there was just too much for them to bear. So we're looking at extending this sewer. Right now, it ends just north of the Mystic Marriott. So this would be a gravity sewer extending up Route 117, just past Route 184. And this is just for the design and preliminary plans so that if a grant comes along, that we have the plans that cost us, so it's in place to apply for any grants.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just a question for, to the mayor, to the town manager, to the, if you look at the sheet on page 214, it is not extended into the final column. Is there a reason for that?
That is missing.
Second?
No, in the, on page 214, there's the, there's the total cost column, and it, there's no extension for the 175.
175 is missing in the right column.
So is the, is the final total correct at the bottom?
I checked, and those totals were all correct.
Okay.
That number just was not there when I received the document, so.
So it should be.
With the overall changes that have been made tonight, there will be a new number that I'll give you. And if you also look at the subtotal for that line, it does add up to 1775. So it's 101.3, the three, and the 175 added together equal the subtotal.
I just wanted to make sure that it was in the right spot.
Yeah, good catch.
It's late, but.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, seeing no other hands, we're gonna take a vote on A10, $175,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight, zero to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. All right, up next, 257, B10 Pump Stations. Counsel Rusk.
Moved the amount of $300,000. So, second.
Moved by Russ, second by Parker. How about that pump station?
This is, it's known as the Little Gibraltar Pump Station. It's kind of a strange name, but it's on Cedar Road in West Mystic. It's one of our main pump stations on the Northeast Interceptor Line. We've been, every couple of years, rehabbing some of these major pump stations. We're gonna be doing Mump Recove very shortly. But we're looking to get some design funds for replacing the pumps, the motors, the motor controllers with some variable-frequency drive units that are much more energy-efficient. This is replacing the original 1970s equipment. There's also some structural issues with the wet oil, so this is just the design work to get the plans and cost estimates together for that work.
All right. Not seeing any hands for B10. For $300,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero. All right. Up next is, on page 258, is C10, the Treatment Facility. Counsel Pacino.
Capital Improvement Program, Project C10 Treatment Facility. I move $1,300,000.
Second. Moved by Pacino, second by Portland.
All right, the, we have two primary clarifiers at the plant. One of them, the mechanism has failed, so it's currently out of service. So if the second one goes, we're gonna be in a little bit of trouble. So we, it's an expensive repair, at 1.3 million, but we have no choice. It's original equipment from the 1970s, so it used to be, needed to have been done a while ago, but it has failed.
Just want you to know, I do not like ending with the most expensive thing on the list.
But again, this is sewer user fees are paying.
Counsel Janus. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Handover, the, I know these are all sewer fees, but are, do we run a healthy balance in our sewer fund to be able to sort of handle all of these kinds of things?
For this year, we're, we have an allowable balance of about $2 million that we're using. Probably, we'll be discussing with this, the Water Pollution Control Authority, potentially raising the rates slightly to cover some of these expenses. But we are using a good bit of the available fund balance to offset these costs. And, you know, we still maintain even more fund balance for like three months, I believe, of operating expenses.
So I, I notice, you know, this is 1.3 million, next year's a million. On the previous one, we had two millions coming up, so there's, there's some hefty bills coming. We, that's why you're looking at possibly raising the rates?
Yeah, that, and, you know, the increased costs of electricity and chemicals, and, you know, everything else, like all the other operational costs.
Okay, great, thank you. Counsel.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no hands. We're gonna take a vote on 1.3 million on C10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. On the schedule, we already did the Shenakasa, and are we on the town functions?
Right, we'll need to change the Shenakasa sewer. We do not need to.
Yep, so now there's four more things that need to be voted on.
Okay, so we go to, next one's on page 159. Begins on page 159.
Well, did you want to vote on the?
Reconsideration?
Just as a whole, the capital reserve total number? Did we do that last year? The 501? Oh. No, they just do it individually. Okay, okay. So for Shenakasa on page 159, part of that was approved previously in the global approval that was done. So, do you want me to provide you with the number now that the CIP is included?
Yes. Do you have all these numbers?
I do.
Prepared and ready, all, on all four of the items?
It's actually gonna be, yes, I do.
Okay.
So for Shenakasa Golf, 2010, it would be 1,994,278.
Okay. Super, can you give me the sewer operating so we can write all of the numbers down?
Yep. Sewer operating is going to be 9,028,481.
All right, and the debt reserves contributions?
That's going to be, for 1075.
Yes, please.
Is going to be 2,320,000.
And capital reserve fund?
Point of information.
Your question.
Could I have the golf course number again?
Sure.
I'm gonna read those ones to you in a second.
Yep. All right. So we should probably do a reconsideration of these items. Is that correct, Mr. Burt?
Correct.
Okay. I am going to put a motion on the floor to do a reconsideration, and I'm gonna open all four of them at one time. Account 2010, 2020, 1075, and 5010.
Seconds.
Hold on just a minute. These are all listed on our schedule. So we will be on page, the first item is, I guess I, on page 160? Oh, I'm so sorry, that's right. All right, reconsideration, we need to take a vote on the reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstained.
That passes seven to one to zero. With Portland. Opposed.
Abstained.
No, she opposed. Did you oppose or did you abstain?
Abstained.
I'm sorry, this is getting really. Seven to zero to one. With Portland abstaining. Okay. All right, on page 159, Shenakasa Golf Course, please change. We have to update our total financing plan number, is that correct?
Yes.
To 1994,278.
Point of information.
274.
What's the number you gave?
Point of information.
Your question.
Do you mean the cost center, not the financing plan?
Which one are we moving?
Cost center. Are we moving the other one?
Are we moving the cost center?
We're not moving the financing plan, we're moving the cost center.
The cost center, I'm sorry.
Yes, because.
Okay.
The golf course is funding some of the CIPs.
What is the number one more time? Can you say it out? Okay, that's the number I put out there. Is there any discussion on this number?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this number?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I did a motion to reconsider. I am putting this number on the floor. I was gonna put all the numbers on the floor, and we could vote on it at one time. I just wanna know if there's any questions about this number. Before we move to the next one.
I'm sorry, I know it's late, and I'm just not following at this point. I'm, I apologize for that, but please tell me it's under the cost center?
Yes.
Why is the number changing?
Because we changed the CIP.
Thank you.
Correct?
Thank you, sorry, again, it's still 11 o'clock.
That's okay, I get it, I get it. All right, we're gonna pay, turn to page 11, 113. This goes into sewer operating. Sewer operating fund. That looks like it's the same number in the book.
It didn't change.
It didn't change? Okay.
Well, it, the overall number didn't change. The original number that you approved did not include the CIP funding portion.
Are we changing on, anything on page 115?
The number that you're going to be voting on tonight is the same that's in the book.
You didn't do the book number originally. The CIPs weren't in when you did it.
Okay. Then we're gonna go to page 197? Cause, so that number stands. And then page 197? This is, begins the capital reserves. So we're changing the cost center from 3.5 down to 2,220,000. Is that correct?
No. 2,320,000.
3 million? 2,320,000?
Yep, 2320000.
And that reflects that 1.18 million cut from the general fund for CIPs.
So you're saying 2320000, correct. Okay. Any questions on this? All right, then page 200, actually 201. So we're gonna be changing the cost center from the 7.4, basically. Can you say the number? All right. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor for Shenakasa Golf Course, account 2010. For the 1994,278, Sewer Operating Fund, account 2020. For 9028481, Capital Debt Services, Capital Reserve slash Contributions, 1075, in the amount of 2320000. Capital Reserve Fund, 5010, in the amount of 7333000. I say move.
Second.
Moved by Franco. Seconded by Gajewski. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes eight to zero to zero. There was, I don't know if there's enough support, but there was questions about holding on to outside services as well that has been brought up.
Yeah, I was looking at that. If you look at the service agencies that went up, and then if you looked at the two libraries, we're talking about 26,000. I don't recommend, I'll see with it.
Okay.
I do recommend later on, we eventually look as suggested at funding scenarios.
Okay. And then, what are, can you tell us the next steps? It's been a while, it's been a year since we've done this last time. Any kind of next steps? I know, what are the next steps before we adjourn? I'd like to know what happens next.
Tended to melt rates and tended to fund balances.
And then we're gonna send it at our Cal meeting, I mean, our town council meeting, to the RTM, correct? With all the numbers finalized?
Right.
I'm sorry, she needs her microphone. After the town council has taken and set what they plan on using for fund balance, as well as their budget, the budget goes to the RTM. And then the RTM will deliberate on it. They cannot go higher than either. The highest between the manager's budget and the town council budget. They can't add any money to the highest of the two.
Right.
They can't take money away. They have until May 25th to do their budget. They have until May 25th to do their budget deliberations, and then it comes back to the town council, and then the town council will set, they will look at it again, figure out if they want that fund balance, if they were going to apply to stay, or if they want to change it, and they will set the mill rate.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, Mr. Burt, the question was also, should we give you direction to, so when you go to the RTM, where the council may stand on fund balance? Were you looking, you have?
That's what we'll do later on. Not yet, but when we talk about fund balance.
Okay. All right, thank you. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion by Parker, seconded by Rusk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I think it's like 10, I can't even see, 1058. 1058. You're adjourned. Rusk, thank you, everybody.